General items shall sign one book. There will be two columns in the book, one for agenda items and one for general issues. Each person signing the book will check the agenda items or general issues. If they check only agenda items or general issues, they will be allowed to speak for five minutes. If they check general issues and agenda items, they will be allowed to speak for 10 minutes. The requirements of NJSA 10:4-9 accept. The Sunshine Law has been met. Notice of this meeting was sent to the Star Ledger and published in the record transcript on July 18, 2013, published on the bulletin board in City Hall and filed in the office of the municipal clerk.
Excuse me. Council colleagues, before we start our matters of discussion, Councilwoman Merrill would just have the recent announcement that you wanted to make.
I almost forgot. I have to leave the meeting at 8 o'clock to pick up my daughter. I could not find anyone to do that. I'm going to do that and return to the meeting, so I hope my departure won't disrupt the meeting.
Thank you. Going into matters of discussion, our first matter of discussion is the Orange Housing Authority. Councilman Abdul Rashid, did you want to do the presentation?
Good evening, everyone. Without any further ado, if the Orange Housing Authority is ready to make their presentation, please proceed. If you want to make any opening statements or whatever you want to make, then that's fine.
Thank you, Councilmember and Council President, and all the council members, as well as the mayor and all the other city officials. I'm Coram Rhimes. I'm the Chair of the Orange Housing Authority. Is this better, Councilman Easton?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll make sure you're comfortable. I've been on the Housing Authority over five years. I received about two years ago my national certification with the NOW Association, and I also received recently a Diamond Leadership Award with National League of Cities. I'm the only person in New Jersey that had that distinction. Prior to that, on the Housing, I served as Council, I served the Planning Board. So I do have a passion for the City of Orange, and I think I have a little knowledge that I bring to the Housing Authority. But tonight, we're here to certainly continue partnership with the City of Orange and continue to work together in a positive vein. We're also here to tell the story of where we are and some of the latest achievements that we have, and we're looking forward to continuing that partnership and bringing great and good housing stock to the City of Orange. So the Director, Dr. Walt McNeil, will come and explain some of the exciting things that we've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, Councilmembers, the mayor, distinguished administrators of the city, and to the public. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to speak to you today and tell you a little bit about what's happening at the Orange Housing Authority. Most of you know that generally when I get a chance to speak about stuff that we're doing in Orange, I get really excited. I get excited because I feel like I'm really part of, we are part of, we're right in the middle of new beginnings every time we get up and speak about the things that are going on in Orange. You know the story about Walter G., so I'm not going to belabor the whole issue of Walter G., but I will tell you that it was probably one, based on my experience in the industry, which goes back quite a while, that it was probably one of the worst housing complexes in this area, maybe even in the country. And what we did in 2009, 2010 was close to miraculous, and it wasn't just the Housing Authority. It was, I stood before this council, and I'd met with the Board of Education, and I'd met with other community leaders about what we needed to do, and people all pulled together, and we put together a couple of applications for tax credits so that we would get the money not only to tear the building down, but also to build new units within like an 18-month period. And it's almost unheard of in New Jersey that you get a chance to do it. Most of the time, the residents get really upset because you're knocking down the buildings, and what happens is they don't have a place to go. But we relocated people in nine months, and then within 18 months, we had new buildings up, and we were putting new people in the new buildings. So, and the net effect of that, and I know a lot of folks talk about public housing, how horrible it is, but we didn't put public housing back up. We put workforce housing back up. And most of you here know that it has changed because you live in the neighborhood, you see what's going on. It's changed. You talked to the police division. The police division, initially, they were going to Walter G. 20, 30 times a day. Now, if they go two or three times a day for issues, it's a lot. I mean, it doesn't go with any problems. Any neighborhood will have some problems, but certainly from 20 to maybe one or two a month, a call to the police department is significant in our particular neighborhood. So at the new Walter G., we were fortunate to be able to not only get one tax credit award, but we got two tax credit awards. When we built at Walter G., 48 senior units, and we decreased the density significantly because initially there were 140 units over there, and there were, in some instances, close to 300 families, 300 people in the building. Now there's 48 senior units, and there are 68 family units. And density is down. The neighborhood is very quiet, and I have a little something with me that keep me reminded of what it looks like. I consistently keep my iPad with me so I can check on the cameras what's going on. And most people see this, see me carrying this around. I don't just keep carry it around for a show. I carry it around so I can see what's going on in the neighborhood at any time at night, anytime. And this is just to show folks that what we can do when we really try and that we put our mind together. It was part of the development that we, and this is live. It's not two days ago, three days ago. It's live action. And actually, you can see some of the cars going by on Freeway Drive right now. So we do this so, because we really have a commitment to making the neighborhood better, we do this because we have a commitment to making Orange better overall. And so I say that again to show you that the Housing Authority is here, we're standing, we're willing to work hand in hand with the city and every member of this community to make the city a better community. And I think we've made a significant difference. But we haven't finished our jobs yet, and that's what I wanted to tell you about today. We haven't finished our jobs because even though we redeveloped Walter G., there's a significant, there's significant portions of the area that still need to be developed. In fact, on the corner of Perro and Oakwood Place, we were recently awarded another group of tax credits, another group of tax, another tax credit award to do the third phase of Walter G. And we, and now, the interesting thing about it is we own all the properties now, and we're about to begin that process. And we're just going through some logistics now with the state before we can tear the last, demolish the last remaining buildings down. And once we demolish the last remaining, the last building, we're going to be able to build. And that will be up, we're going to build 42 units there. And what we did, we passed out a fact sheet. All the council people have the fact sheets on the, and also members of the public, the fact sheets about Walter G. I mean, it's going to be an interesting development, and we had to develop the unit sizes based on the standards that the New Jersey Housing Mortgage Finance Agency has provided for us. But we didn't stop there at Walter G. 3, where we're developing 42 units. We're consistently looking in the community about how we could deal with issues. So we went and, we went to Oakwood Avenue where there was a fire about two or three years ago. Seven units were burned out, and it displaced 38 families. And yet, we did help out with placing some of the families. But what we did do, we knocked down vacant and abandoned structures. And we did that because we had a commitment to making the neighborhood better, and you're going to see that as a recurring theme. And what we're going to build there is going to be something that everybody is going to be very proud of. We're putting seven new units up that are going to, and most of the units are going to be wheelchair accessible. It's going to be on a lot. It's going to be camera, and it's going to display some of the most modern type of things that you can have in a workforce housing development. And you're not going to have any problems with us in this development. In fact, you're going to be proud of it. And we even have solar panels, and this is the development over here. I'm sorry I'm moving around. I know you guys have something to do with cameras. We have solar panels that are going to go on.
Director McNeil, can you bring or have her bring it to you because you have to talk into the mic?
Okay, I'm sorry. The building is even going to have solar panels on it. So essentially, the solar panels are going to allow for us to basically bring our own energy into the building to generate energy for the common areas. And this is another project that we did, not only because it was the Housing Authority and Housing Development Corporation, but it was because of the city administration, it was because of the city council, and everybody working together. Common theme. We don't get things done like this in communities where folks don't work together. So I'm really proud to know that we can work together to get something like this done. And it's only seven units, but it was a major problem because people were living in the basements, we had dogs in the basements, and, you know, people were afraid. And we're marching down Oakwood, we're going to march down Central Place also, and the, another big unit, and again, I'm not going to bother you with the details, with the development because I put them in the, in the fact sheet. I mean, you know it's seven units, and it's, the unit, the unit size is going to be a little bit larger than the normal sizes, a lot of amenities. We're going to have all ceramic tiles in the kitchens, in the bathrooms, all hardwood floors, just like we did at Walter G. And it's going to be something that people can be proud to live in. In addition to that development, I want to tell you about our latest development, and I don't, our latest development, and incidentally, both of these developments have already been through the planning board and approved. We've already have site plan approval, so we're ready to go with those. And any day now, you know, we're going to be breaking ground, and certainly, we're going to invite everybody to a ceremony where we're going to be breaking ground and really getting started with the development. So in addition to that, we're working on the North Perro Street development. I'm going to bring that over. And this is the site plan, this is the preliminary site plan. And we pretty much have site control over all the units here now, and essentially, this is going to be 18-unit development. We're not exactly sure about the funding as of this point, except for through the Housing Development Corporation. But what was important is that this lot, again, there were all vacant, it was vacant land, undeveloped, it was dumping grounds for folks. We've cleaned it up to the point right now where you can drive through Freeway Drive, by Freeway Drive, which is pretty much right over here, and you can see a pretty clean property, whereas before, you saw weeds that were out of control. People, it showed that there was no concern for the area. And we've got one more property to take, and then we can take this project to the Planning Board, and we can see we can build some consensus about developing this project. Once it's passed by the Planning Board, we got, I think we have a better shot at getting funding through other places besides the Orange Housing Development Corporation. And based on the square footage, we think this is going to be a pretty decent-sized property. And of course, Mr. Scotland is pointing out the fact that there's a lot of amenities to this project, there's park and play areas. And that was one of the things that some of the council people, some of the people from the community brought out, based on our last development, that we need to start developing some play areas so the kids don't have to play in the street or the parking lot. There is 1,000 square foot playground. The grounds are going to be amenable to this. There's going to be a burn here, so folks are not going to be able to come over into the development, and it's, and it's going to be pointed really nicely in the community. It's going to be one of the nicest developments in the community, I believe. And of course, parking, sufficient parking, and also a waste area, too. And this is going to go before the Planning Board as soon as we get the last ownership farce on, which we're working very hard on. And one of the things I want, wanted to tell you about, and I'm excited about, is the fact that one of the tools that we've used in order to acquire some of these units is through eminent domain. And I know Brian Scotland, who was here, was going to talk quite a bit, a little bit about, you know, how we've gone through the process, but I want you to be assured that we didn't just start picking things up and decided that we were going to develop things based on just a notion. You know we did a study, and most of the council people know we did a study of the 400 units in our area, a very comprehensive study. We went to every household in that area. We gave it a grade, we wanted to look at the ownership, we wanted to look at what condition the house was, and financially, and we, of course, we've got tools to do that, the physical structure of the property. And then, you know, as you know what we started to do, we started to utilize eminent domain. And I wanted to say this, and I wanted to say this on the record to you, we have not done an eminent domain on any property where it was not in some state of trouble, or it wasn't, you know, not being used for its highest and best use. We have not, and we will not, you know. And the reason why we won't is because we don't believe in, you know, taking somebody's property if it has some relevant use to the community. And a relevant use may be just to house a family, and we haven't really done that. I mean, there have been instances where people have been in homes that were so substandard that you wouldn't even believe it. I mean, we've taken homes where there were, there were planks on the floor missing, and you could see into the basement. And there were reasons why we did that. The reasons why we did it is because we knew that we were helping the individuals out. They were over their heads with their mortgages, and they, and essentially, what we ended up doing is ended up taking the property because there was no way they can improve it. And I think as a community, we have to really look at that whole issue when it comes to development. And I know there's been a lot of discussion about eminent domain, and there's been a lot of discussion about how you develop a community, but we've got to utilize every tool that we possibly can use so that we can make sure that a large portion of an area is developed and developed well. If we don't, we're going to suffer that time lapse that occurs when you're waiting, you're trying to wait people out, and then you wait people out and you don't get the benefit of the total development. The reason for me bringing up the whole issue of the study is to show that, to tell you that there's, there was, there was some background in terms of why we did what we did. We just didn't do it just because it was a notion. We didn't just start doing North Perro Street just because it was a notion. It's a problem. We didn't start doing Oakwood Avenue because it was, we wanted to do it. We want, it was because it was a problem, and we attacked it. And as a developer, and I'm going to put the Orange Housing Development Corporation hat on, you have to know, we're a nonprofit developer, and every dime that we get at the Orange Housing Development Corporation from doing the development, we put it back into developing other parts of our community. And that's the, that's the benefit of utilizing the Orange Housing Development Corporation as a developer for our community. And you see it because in addition to these larger units that we're doing, we're marching our way down Central Place, as you know, where we've acquired certain units, and certain units we're going to demolish, certain units we're going to rehab. But we need to see progress, and pretty fast progress, in order to have the largest impact that we need to have on the community. Okay, with that, I'm going to stop, and what I'm going to do, I'm going to bring up our development associate who works for the Orange Housing Development Corporation, Mr. Brian Scotland. And he's going to talk a little bit about the study, and he's going to talk a little bit about some of the things that we've done. And I, I'm sorry, I was remiss, and I didn't mention the fact that we have Brian Scotland.
Director McNeil, you got, just kind of focus on the mic when you talk.
Okay, I'm sorry. We have Brian Scotland, who's with us, who's our development associate. Come on up, Brian. And certainly, we're proud to have him. He's been working with us for a year. I know he's always embarrassed to say, for me to say these things, but he's a very educated young man. He knows economics very well. He's a University of Pennsylvania-trained person, and we're proud to have him working for our organization. Thanks.
And your public relations.
And I do have, pardon?
Your public relations.
Yeah, and I wanted to introduce her also. This is Phyllis Greer, our public relations person for the Orange Housing Development Corporation. And we've got some young, but very, and very talented people who work for our agency, and that's why we're able to get so much done. So this is Phyllis, and they're going to do a little presentation on some of the things that they've been working on for us, for us, our community.
Mrs. Scotland, thank you.
Hey, good evening. I just want to, you know, counsel, councilmen and women, and council president and mayor. Excuse me if I seem a little nervous. This is my first time speaking at a council meeting, so I am a little bit nervous. But basically, last winter, December, if you can remember, it was a very cold winter, it was very cold December. And what we started seeing around the community is a lot of, a lot of squatters would break into vacant, bent structures, and they would think it was a good idea, a good enough idea to start a fire in the bathtub, because, you know, the bathtub is, you know, a safe place, relatively safe. But what would happen was, it would catch onto the walls, and because these houses are, some of the houses are really old, they would go up in flames. And if, I'm sure, you know, some of you know, this is South Center Street, 194 South Center Street, went up in flames, and unfortunately, the person who owned the house next door had just renovated his house for sale, and it caught fire before, you know, he was able to sell it. But my point is, you know, there are a lot of vacant and abandoned structures, and this caught our attention, so this is what prompted us to do the study on 404 lots and properties in our immediate redevelopment area. And I wanted to show you, you know, something significant is, when we did the study, we found out that, you know, in some blocks, in some areas, roughly two-thirds are operating, and one-third of the properties were not operational. They could be either vacant structures, abandoned structures, or pieces of vacant land, you know, people would park on, or, you know, things just were not, garbage was being thrown. So one out of three, and if you can imagine walking down a neighborhood where one out of three properties aren't being operational, it's pretty, pretty significant. So we, I mean, we put this graph together to visually show you, you know, the red is obviously non-operating. So this was January when we started the study, and we started looking at the neighborhood. Underneath it is as of November, as of last month. This darker orange gap shows you the Orange Housing Development Corporation, what properties that we've purchased and plan on developing within the next, you know, 12 to 18 months. And you can see that in certain areas, it's, we're trying to make a significant impact. And this is just the beginning, you know, that we started developing in this area, we started developing in this area. And it's already improving, and we're trying to, trying to go forward from there. And well, I just wanted to say, you know, a lot of these vacant, abandoned structures, we found, we did title searches on about 30 properties, and, you know, title searches aren't cheap, they take some time. You know, we're focused on finding out what the issue is, and we found a lot of times, you know, that these structures would, I guess, the banks, you know, during the, during the mortgage crisis during 2004 to 2008, people would take out, you know, put debt on their properties for about $250,000 to $300,000. You know, when they, when the banks foreclosed, the homeowners typically walk away, the banks don't take care of the property, there's no ownership. Nobody has ownership of the properties. So what Dr. McNeil decided to do was take matters into his own hands and do eminent domain on these particular properties. And what it does is, it, you know, brings the properties back into, into being operational. And we found that this is significant. And as you can see, this is the last four that I wanted to show you. I mean, this is, these are 16 different properties within, around Orange, you know, Oakwood, South Center, Nassau, Moron South Center, Chapman, I mean, Perro, Oakwood Place, I mean, these are, it's a very, very big issue in this community, and we are, you know, taking strides to, to correct the issue, and that's, you know, we appreciate your help, and we wanted to just say thank you, and that we're working on it.
Great job, great job, Mr. Scotland, on your first presentation. Before we take questions, Director McNeil, would I, would just question for, suggest to you? You're open, great presentation, you're open, and you're very familiar with everything that you're doing, and you keep the city council engaged, the community, the Housing Authority meetings engaged. Your opening statement about Walter G. was kind of not, and I got it at the end, you know, because born and raised in the East Ward. Walter G., as the name that it bears, has a strong history, and the latter part of that history is a small portion of the Walter G. history. So, and it is, you know, named after a very hardworking person, so just as you give the presentation, I would just encourage you, and public housing authorities all over the United States suffered because the model had, has changed for what public housing, the social, the social part was no longer part of it, which caused the beginning of the collapse, which evolved into what happened to many public housing units. And I don't know if it's the worst because there are many, you know, everybody, every ED will probably say that they have a worse public housing development in their community. So Walter G. is something, and a lot of great people have gone on and are very committed to the City of Orange. So just in your opening statement, when you talk about Walter G., just kind of get to how it evolved, and some of that was, you know, how they began to divorce themselves from the public housing, that caused some of the social problems. With that, council members, do you have any questions?
Council President.
Councilwoman Merrill.
How are you, Dr. McNeil?
Good. How are you, Councilman?
I just want to be clear, this rendering regarding the Oakwood Avenue development, that is the corner of Oakwood and Central Avenue?
No, no, it's not, sir. This is the seven units that are closer to Hampton, across the street is Hampton Terrace, or Hampton Road, I'm sorry.
Hampton.
Hampton Terrace, Hampton Terrace and Oakwood Avenue.
Okay, so what appears to be a corner there is not really a corner.
Well, it's sort of like a mirage. The architects set it apart from everything else. And actually, when you see the, the site plan, do we have the site plan for Oakwood Avenue? Actually, it's on your, it's in the packet, and you'll see that it is actually set apart from that angle.
Okay. You will recall, I hope that you and I met, I think, last spring. We had a one-on-one meeting where we discussed some of the content of your presentation. Tonight specifically, we reviewed the renderings regarding the Oakwood Avenue development. And I shared with you quite candidly at that time that I thought it was quite unattractive. Do you recall that?
Yeah, I do.
In In fact, that's the front of it. The back is much worse, in my view. And it's just my opinion. Now, clearly, our own sense of aesthetic should not be the guiding motivator in terms of our vote, but clearly, the way something looks is important. Is that it? There will be, and I think I asked you this then, I'm assuming since it's the exact same renderings, that nothing has changed, and am I correct that nothing will change?
Well, a lot has changed since we spoke.
In terms of the look of the building?
Yes, in terms of the look, a lot has changed. In fact, the color scheme has changed, and then the internal design, the spacing, the accommodations, in fact, the number of bathrooms per unit. In fact, the board had a very significant impact on the number of bathrooms per unit. And some of the units, they actually have a powder room and a bathroom, some have two bathrooms per unit. So the, the internal aesthetics, you'll see, it's going to be, you know.
Well, I'm much more speaking to the exterior.
Well, it's in the eye of the beholder, you know. We had an architect who designed it, and I respect the fact that you don't like the design. It's a newer design. It's not colonial, it's not, you know, Victorian.
It's more Meadowlands. If you know that project out of the Meadowlands, every time I ride by there, I wince, the back of this in particular reminds me of those color panels.
Well, well, they're actually hardy shake that you see on that building and brick, and we're using some materials on that building that are probably some of the more modern type of materials to use, so that we can insulate it well, and so that it preserve, the building is preserved. So, I mean, I understand, I understand you don't like the design, but that's what we have.
Not about my opinion, but again, my question is, that is the final version of it?
That is the final rendering, but there's still going to be opportunities to change colors, structure, and that sort of stuff. It's going to be that, that's it.
Then I guess I'd just be curious to know whether any council people share my sense of it. Obviously, again, that's not the primary consideration for us in terms of our vote on these projects and related issues, but I think what something looks like is important to a town. There are some towns you go in where there's a commonality, there's a consistency, you know you're in that town.
Right.
Because of the color scheme and the architecture, this looks like nothing, you're right, it looks like nothing I've seen in orange, and it's not my taste.
I appreciate your comments, but one thing I would say to you, sir, is that it's very consistent with the color scheme of Walter G, and not only is it consistent, but the design, structures inside as well as outside are very consistent. And being the predominant architectural structure in the, in that East Ward area, I would say to you, that's what we were trying to follow without trying to copy it too much. So I'd close in saying that, you know, I respect, I respect your opinion about it, you know.
Do you have a blow-up of the back of the building?
It's in your.
No, do you have a blow-up?
I think we still, though we have a rendering of the back, you know, we didn't bring, I can show it to you. But I can tell you, there are challenges with every project, and what you have to understand, too, is it goes as deep as where you're going to place the garbage containers, and do you have enough space for the fire safety people to get through to the backyard?
It was a public.
Director, is this?
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, it's in every council member's bracket.
Yeah.
I just wondered if he had a larger version for the public.
Is that, is that it?
That's it.
Yeah, that is.
Councilor, Director, does the design have anything to do that it's a solar panel, or is, no, one of the?
It does, and we tried to make the roofing situation so that it was, the solar panels would be able to sit on in the correct way. And not only that, the design had everything to do with the size of the, the exterior design had everything to do with the size of the bedrooms and the interiors of the building. So we tried to, and these, like I said, 1,300 square feet, three bedrooms, that's just as big as some people's homes, you know. So we tried to accommodate, make these units attractive, not, I mean, some people really liked that design. Obviously, the architect drew it for us, so we tried to make it as attractive inside as we thought it would be outside. That was our, that's what we came up with.
Councilwoman Eaton?
Director McNeil, I have a few questions. First one, as you talked about solar panels, as we go through ones that were green and the solar panels, have you guys considered how they react in a fire? Because I know there was a fire a couple of months ago, and they couldn't contain it because the firemen were afraid that the solar panels would crush them. I mean, is that fire safety, I know that everybody say green machine, green is good, 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 but did anybody look into safety factors in case there's a fire and how those solar panels react to a fire?
Well, these have been, these, both of these developments have been through the planning board, and in order to get through the planning board, they had to go through fire safety to get a sign off on that. I mean, that's the good thing about having a pretty structured development environment. I mean, some people don't think it's so structured, but it is. I mean, based on my understanding, and you get police, you get fire, you have to deal with garbage, so they looked at it from a fire safety perspective, and they thought it was okay. And we also had that consideration. There were questions about how to deal with the roof in the event that, the solar panels, the event that the roof starts to deteriorate. We went through a lot of different imaginations about the project, and it is a green project, too, so.
So the fire department gave it its support?
Yes, this project has been through planning board, we're ready to now.
But keep in mind, the planning board is not, has no expertise in fire safety.
Right, but they, but they do have to go.
That's what makes sure that the fire department has looked at all of those aspects. The other thing is, I want, I want to put on the table is that as you do new development, and as people continue to come into Orange, and they're coming with children, we have no recreation. You know, six to nine is basically defunct, so the kids in the evening has no place to go. Do you guys ever consider that maybe part of your project, you would implement some type of activity for the children that are coming into Orange, or, I mean, I know the Board of Education right now is, is, some of the classrooms are overcrowded and things of that nature, but I think as we move forward in redevelopment areas, that's an aspect we need to explore. How do we entertain the children so that we keep them off the street?
Councilwoman, I got to tell you, you always seem to hit the nail right on the head. And we, I mean, you know, we're one of the primary groups that's responsible for housing children in Orange. I know the Board of Education, they come to us a lot and say, but what about education? What about education? I respect that. But before, before educates, we always like to say, and you know, I always take a strong stand, you got to, somebody's got to have a place to live, because if they're out on the street somewhere, guess what? They ain't going to be educated too well, you know. And people don't say that because housing directors, the housing community, that voice hasn't sort of gotten out there, but we do, because we, because when we talk to, about a development in our community, that's why we can have the back and forth with Councilman Marable. Of course, we had the back and forth with Councilman Williams about the whole issue of recreation. And I got to tell you, she was one of the people, along with yourself and some former councilpeople, who were pretty much demanding that we build a 4,000 square feet community center. So in the new Walter G complex, which you will see also, Councilman Marable, in your design stuff, it has a 4,000 square foot community center. So we had to think about it, because we're talking to people, we're not doing this in a vacuum. And we, now, I'm not going to tell you that we have every dime to support an after-school program, but we're going to sit down with the school system, as we've done in the past, we're going to sit down with the city to find out how we can populate that 4,000 square feet. It is humongous. You know, if you see it on the site plan, you're like, well, what are you going to do with this big place? They requested it, we put it there, because it was, because they're part of the design process, with the community as part of the design process. But you hit it on the head. I'm concerned about that, too.
Council president?
Councilor Corvus.
Mr. McNeil, I certainly want to commend you and your board for all your efforts in trying to beautify Orange and all of the projects that you are working on. But you seem to be concentrating more so in one particular section of town, which seems to be the East Ward.
Right.
And with all the beautification that you are bringing to the East Ward, are you, and you and I have had this conversation before, are you planning on broadening your horizons and sort of looking outside of the East Ward at some other areas, example, the Valley section, to try to beautify that and bring that back to what it should be?
We, we hope so. I mean, we're, you know, we're a small agency, as you know, and as we've discussed on a number, on a number of occasions with different people, that, you know, we see it very important to bring back one of the areas that has had the most trying times. And you will see, I mean, I will tell you, based on my background in community development and housing, that when you build up one of the most difficult areas, it has a very positive impact on all the other areas. You see, I mean, the economy is starting to pick up a little bit more, and what we're getting now, I mean, I'm on the ground floor, you know I am, I'm going back and forth with realtors, competing with individuals who are willing to purchase homes. I mean, I'm trying to control an area so that I can make sure that somebody doesn't buy something and then just sits on it and speculates. But there is a market starting to develop now. The economy's getting better. In fact, we ran into some developer from some other town down in South Jersey, I won't mention the name, but he basically said he saw our signs up. And since he saw our signs up and knew that there was a new development coming up, and when we were building Walter G, he said he started buying properties, and he did buy a number of properties in the area. And he, and they basically tried to increase the prices on homes that we thought that we, he thought that we needed. And so I'm seeing the market is, is starting to get a little bit better, you're listening to, you listen to the news, and I think that what we're doing in this area is going to improve every other area of Orange. You know, that's just, I mean, that's basic economics. I mean, you see the economy overall is getting better, the housing stocks have gone up quite a bit in the city. We're doing, our chairperson just reminded me to say something about the scattered sites that we're doing. When we started off in 2008 doing this sort of stuff, we only owned a couple of properties. We own 40 properties now in the city, as you know. And they're significant, because we've either rehabbed them, or we're putting them together so that we can do a development, so that we can improve it. This is all going to make things better for not only the East Ward, but also the other wards, because when you don't have a lagging ward or an area, it builds up the school system, builds up the housing stock, all of that, I believe. Now, that's my, that's my opinion.
Well, you know, on the surface, it certainly appears as if the housing authority, the housing corporation, seems to be taking the leadership role in trying to redevelop and bring the city back to what it used to be, and even better than what it was. And that's the only reason I'm suggesting to you that you might want to look outside of the East Ward and see if there's some other properties that you guys might want to purchase and redevelop. It certainly wouldn't hurt anything, it would only help. And people see that what you're doing, of course, it entices and brings others to come in and want to do the same thing, so I just, I just want to encourage you, keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilwoman Eaton?
I just want to say just a comment. Director McNeil did look in my ward.
Yes.
Those houses are now gone. They were left, so he did have some houses over there in Orange in place that he was interested in.
Good, good.
But could we have you get you interested in 300 North Day? What are you thinking? Can we give him 300 North Day? Could you guys take a look at that?
Well, I can guarantee that.
Oh, you can't talk, Brian, this is Scotland.
But I'm sorry, Councilor Corvus, but that's still in the East Ward.
But council, council members, any other questions? But I will say, in your scattered housing, your scattered housing is all throughout the city.
Yeah, well, we do have some throughout the city, yes.
Right, scattered housing. Also, when you were originally on come, we rescheduled your presentation, you did not mention, and I think that is something that you should mention, and Jim, you might want to mention in terms of the award that you received that took you, yes, I didn't.
He mentioned it in the beginning, and he was.
But you mentioned that the housing authority, not your award, the housing authority, which you got noticed for Walter G.
Oh, yeah, that's right, we did, I did mention that, that's right. We, in the summer, yes, we were given a national award for the design work with Walter G. It wasn't for Oakwood Avenue, but it was for Walter G. And it was, it was also for the public-private partnership, because we own Walter G, of course, with Joe Alpert and the Alpert Group. And even though he's a private developer, you know, we brought him into our development after we put the whole deal together, so that we could take advantage of some of the things that the private partner would be able to offer, such as the guarantees that were required at that time. And, I mean, of course, we helped him out quite a bit, too, because we brought him into development that was pretty much put together already. And we, we're so proud of that. But most of the development that we're going to do from now on, after Walter G3, we're probably going to do, when it makes sense, we'll do private-public partnerships. If it doesn't, we're going to do them by ourselves, you know, God willing, you know. So, but we are, we are happy about that award, and thank you, Council President, for bringing that up. We are being recognized nationally for the work, and also in New Jersey for the work that we're doing here.
Councilor Corvus.
Mr. McNeil, one other question. With the project that you have over here, is that market rate housing that you're looking at?
No, it's not market rate housing. It's called workforce housing. And workforce housing means that there is no more $50 rent, it means that at the bare minimum, somebody's paying $700 for one bedroom. And I'm generalizing, because sometimes the rent is a little bit more or a little bit less. You'll see, like, even at Walter G, when I look at the cameras during the day, I'm like, there's no cars around there, where are all the cars? And then in the night, I look at the development and the parking lots, there's cars all around. Well, people have cars, they go out and they work every day. And some people don't like the idea of the workforce housing, because some people characterize it as affordable housing, but it really is. It's people making 30 grand, 40 grand a year, it's our children, our kids who are just getting out of college, it's a fireman, it's a police officer, it's a teacher, it's somebody who's just getting a start, a nurse, and these are, this is the backbone of our community. And that's why it's so good. And you go over there and you see people, I mean, when they get over there at 7:00 in the morning, I don't have to get out of my bed to do that, I can look at the camera and I'm seeing, jeez, they're going off to work. Every day, these people are going off to work. And that's what we need in our community. That's exactly what we need in our community, I think.
Thank you.
All right?
And I guess when you come back, will you, because your Phase 3 was initially going to be purchased, and I think the phases have changed, will you come back, is that still being entertained to have some?
Well, I do want to address that question, because a number of people said that, oh, you're supposed to be building market rate housing now, and that sort of stuff. You have to understand two things. One, who we are, first of all, we're the housing authority, and the type of funding that we're likely to get. We're likely to get tax credit monies, HOPE 6 monies, even though that's no more, but monies that relate to developmental housing, or first start housing. And in addition to that, us being the housing authority and the housing development corporation, who would be likely to get that type of money, the market had to be right for that. And remember where we were, and this is the thing that kills me a lot of times, people don't remember, well, nobody wanted to buy anything. Remember, we were buying homes for $28,000 in the area. We bought homes on, not Alden, on Ward Street, we bought homes on Central, we bought homes on Oakwood, we bought for 28, $15,000. We ain't doing that today. We're not. We're not, because the market has gone up. If there's a structure on it, we're not buying it, because the market has gone up. But we, I, I'd like to think that we were the generators of the, the market going up a little bit, you know. And in fact, I know we were, because we are, because people feel much more safe over there, thanks to the police, and, and, and we, they've made it, the administration has made it a priority to make sure they, they cover the area, and there's been talks about that, we talk about it, and that's how you get things done as a community, I think.
Thank you. Council members, any more questions? Thank you for coming, Orange Housing and Orange Development Corporation. We look forward to you coming back to give us more updates as, as your development evolves.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Sorry about your coffee.
Moving on to the, the second matter of discussion, Chris Mobley, would you like to do an introduction?
Good evening, Council President. Good evening, Council Members and Mayor and residents. Chris Mobley, Acting Deputy Director, Planning Economic Development, Water and Parking Liaison for the City of Orange Township. As you may remember, earlier this year, we had a discussion regarding water in the City of Orange, and more specifically, the contract that we currently have with United Water, who manages our water system, both the water and wastewater. That contract was due to expire, has expired, and we were looking at renewing the contract. And we came before you and said that before we renewed the contract, we wanted to take a look at the performance of United Water related to the contract, and also take a look at our water rates. And so I had the pleasure of working with Julius Consone, who's here this evening, from the firm of Lurch, Vincian Higgins, as well as his associate, Megan O'Hara, and we worked together on this project. We had an opportunity to interview Bob Galanti, who was at the time the, the plant operator, if you will, for United Water, who managed our facility. He has since departed from United Water and moved on to a new job. But during that time, in the opportunity to interview him, we learned some interesting information about the performance of United Water as it relates to our water system. And I'm going to invite Julius to come on up and, and share that with you in a moment. But I want to also let you know, before they come up, that one of the things that we found out is that there are some very pressing issues related to the infrastructure that need to be addressed. Some issues, unfortunately, have been ignored, but these are issues nonetheless that need to be addressed by the administration and by this council, and we're going to talk about that this evening. And so the presentation that you're going to hear is about where we are in terms of the water, where we are in terms of the contract negotiation with United Water. I've worked with the Law Department on that with United Water. We have not negotiated a contract with them yet, and I'll come back after you hear the presentation and, and give you some sense of where we are with that.
Mr. Mobley, are there any handouts?
Yes, each of you should have received the report that had been prepared by the firm. I brought it down to the clerk's office about two weeks ago with a cover letter. All right. With that, Julius, I invite you to come on up with your presentation.
Thank you, Chris. My name is Julius Consone, I'm a partner with the firm of Lurch, Vincian Higgins. This is Megan O'Hanlon, as Chris had said, she also assisted me in preparing this report for the city. Thank you for the opportunity to come and present this report tonight. We, did everybody receive the report?
Everybody received it. I just wanted to see if anybody bring their report back with them? Does anybody, okay, we're.
Steve, Brian, it's, it's.
Chris.
I see you have some.
Okay. You can go ahead and talk.
Okay, because I will refer to the report a little bit during the presentation as well. Basically, as Chris has indicated, we, at the time, we were engaged to do the, the city was under contract and still with United Water for performing maintenance of the water system, the wastewater system and the stormwater system. That contract has since expired, however, United Water is still continuing to perform these services. So part of our study was to review the services that are being performed by United Water and also to see if they were performing in accordance with the contract terms.
I'm sorry, Julius.
That's okay, I'm just waiting for the reports to end up. Thank you. Okay. So on the bottom of page one of our report, we basically outlined some of the main services that United Water was supposed to be performing under the contract, and I'm just going to summarize those here. For the water system, United Water was required to flow test 10% of the water system on an annual basis, which is 40,000 linear feet. They were also required to flush all hydrants on an annual basis. They were required to exercise all water valves once every four years. And, and again, these are not all the services, but they're just the main services that were in the contract. There was also a requirement for them to test all larger meters once every four years. That was for the water system. On the top of page two, the, they were supposed to perform for the wastewater system, they were supposed to develop a program for identifying inflow and infiltration. For those of you that aren't that familiar with sewer systems, basically, the pipes over the years, I'm not sure exactly how old your system is, but the pipes leak, basically, so they were supposed to go and identify problem areas and develop a plan for you to identify and remediate some of these problem areas. They were also supposed to clean all the sewer mains once every three years, and they were supposed to inspect all sewer mains with the television camera once every 10 years. So the, the idea was that the entire system would have been inspected and cambered during the 10-year contract period. With the stormwater system, they were supposed to develop a flood prevention program, they were supposed to clean all stormwater mains once every five years, they were supposed to clean all catch basins and inlets twice a year. And the last thing on the list that was in the report was they were supposed to clean all public channels twice a year. Now, all of these services, in addition, there were other services, the base fee for those services that I just mentioned was approximately $1.4 million per year. So for that $1.4 million, that's what the city was receiving, or supposed to be receiving. We then did a review to see if they were indeed performing under the contract. So on page three of the report, and I'm just going to put myself there for a minute, in the second paragraph, I outlined some of the areas where they were not performing, and we went back and we reviewed only the past two years' performance, just to see how they were doing during the past two years. And what we found was that there were certain areas that they were not performing in accordance with the contract. We had met, actually, as Chris had mentioned earlier, with Bob Galanti, who was the, he was in charge of the water system and the operation of the plant at the time, so we met with him. He provided us with his maintenance records, so we actually had United Water's actual maintenance records that they provided when we did our analysis. And what we found was that the, the storm, stormwater system had not met the contractual requirement for cleaning on an annual basis of approximately 18,000 linear feet per year. So they did not perform that in accordance with the agreement. The exercising of the water valves of approximately 375 per year had not been met, and this is all for, I'm sorry, these numbers that I'm mentioning are for the year 2013, the most current year. The flushing of the hydrants had not met, there's roughly five, they were supposed to flush all the hydrants once every year, there's roughly 500 hydrants in the city, and the flushing of all the hydrants had not been completed. Hydrant flow testing of the 10% per year of the system had not been completed. And lastly, the testing of the water mains, not the water mains, I'm sorry, the water meters, on the lines larger than three inches had not been completed. So those were the areas that we had identified, and I guess right now, there's been some discussion with United Water, which I'm not really sure where we stand with that at this point, to be perfectly honest, but those were, that was where our findings related to the performance items or the non-performance. Page four of the report, I just wanted to draw your attention to a chart that we had prepared. What we had done is we, when we do these studies, we like to compare the municipality or the city that we're doing to other comparable municipalities to see how they stack up in terms of what they're paying for their water fees. So we look at the average residential homes and see what the average residential home in Orange pays versus some of the other communities. And if you look on that chart at the bottom of page four, you can actually see, with the exception of the City of East Orange, Orange was the lowest of all the communities that we looked at, paying roughly $91 per quarter for an average residential home. That was lower than the City of Rahway, who pays roughly $103 per quarter. Saig Valley Water Commission, which services Clifton, Patterson, and Passaic, they pay roughly $129 per quarter. Woodbridge is $130 a quarter. United Water is $146 a quarter, and Linden was $148 a quarter. So you can see that Orange's $91 stacks up very favorably when compared to these other communities.
You put United Water in as a community?
Well, United Water services several of the municipalities.
So you're just saying all the municipalities, the average is 146.
Yes.
I got you.
Similar, we did the same thing with the sewer system on the top of page five. With the sewer system, the City of Orange residents pay roughly $81.25 for an average residential home. That stacks up, it's basically, I would say, middle of the road. I mean, you're kind of right in the median with all the other communities that we looked at. We then looked at also, part of the contract is not only what the services performed and the base fee for United Water, but then we also looked at what, there's additional costs that United Water performs for repair and replacement items, which are not covered in the base fee. So for the year 2012, in addition to the $1.4 million to pay for the base contractual items, there was additional roughly $700,000 paid to United Water for repair and replacement costs, and for the first four months of 2013, it was roughly $120,000. Part of what we did then is we also looked at, in meeting with United Water, we had some discussions with the plant superintendent about the capital needs of the systems, and they had provided us with a list of, and they prioritized things into high, medium, and low priority for the needs for the system. So then we went in and we, based on their recommendations, we incorporated into our study, into the budget projections that we prepared, approximately $4.6 million for new projects for the water system, and $3.3 million for new improvements to the sewer So, and then, so basically, we did a budget projection where we incorporated all these new capital costs that were going to need to be addressed, based on United Water's recommendations, and your normal operations, which the largest single cost was the payment to United Water. Okay? So, basically, then, to, to provide for the utility to remain self-liquidating, and I'm not sure if everybody's aware what self-liquidating is, but for a utility, you're basically required to have where your revenues meet your projected expenses so that you can operate on a self-liquidating basis. Currently, the utility would not be able to sustain itself with all these costs that I just discussed and the rates that you currently have in place. So in order for the utility to maintain self-liquidating, it would require a 17% increase in water rates and an 8% increase in sewer rates. And that's roughly, just to break it down into dollars and cents, it would be roughly a $15 per quarter increase in water rates to the average residential home, and a $6 per quarter increase in the sewer rates per quarter. And with these rate increases, that would be able to maintain the, the utility on a self-liquidating basis for three years, meaning that there should not be any additional rate increases over the next three years. That should maintain it self-liquidating for that period of time. On page nine, we prepared two additional charts, which basically outline how Orange would stack up if you were to implement these rate increases. So on the top of page nine, you can see for the water system, if you were to implement that 17% increase, your rate would go from $91 per quarter to $106 per quarter, which still, when you look at the other communities that were in that same chart we looked at earlier, you'll be slightly ahead of the City of Rahway, they would be, you know, you're 106, they'd be 103, but then every other comparable would still be higher than the City of Orange. Similarly, with the sewer system, on the bottom of page nine, with the proposed increase of 8%, your rate would go from $81 per quarter to $87 per quarter, and it doesn't really have any significant impact in terms of where you fall on the chart, because you're still going to be middle of the pack, which is where you are today. So in closing, I'm just going to go to page 16 and highlight a couple of the items here that I just went over, basically, some of the findings that we basically already discussed. We discussed some of the contractual items that we found that United Water wasn't performing, which we covered already. We also discussed the fact that if, based on the projected costs for the new capital costs, which is roughly 7.9 million in new capital costs to be included in this report, and all the operating costs going forward, that you would be at a deficit, you wouldn't be able to maintain the utility on a self-liquidating basis. That deficit is projected to be cumulative $3 million over the next five years to, if you tried to do all these costs and did nothing with the rates. We already spoke about the, the increases that would be required, 17% in the water system, 8% in the sewer system, which again is the $15 per quarter water, and $6 per quarter in the sewer. That's pretty much the gist of it. There are a couple of other little things that are in the report, which I didn't really go over, because at this point, I'm not really sure that they're really relevant based on where we are today. I think these are the key items that probably should be addressed right now.
Megan, did you want to say anything for questions?
I'll just jump in if there's any questions and.
Chris, Mr. Mobley, did you want to close before council asks questions, or did you want to wait till the queue and I?
I'll wait till the queue ends.
Okay, council member, are there any questions? I would, no question, I have one question. When you looked at the other towns and their rates, how long, I mean, do, did it look like they increased annually just to keep up with the cost of maintaining the system?
Every community is a little different, honestly, in terms of how they handle it. Some communities are very proactive in terms of doing increases on an annual basis. I want to say, for the ones that were in this report, that all of those rates were fairly recent rates, meaning that they were all enacted in either, I believe, 2012 or 2013. They were newly established rates within the last year.
So pretty much all, all the other communities similarly have flat, and then they raise their rates up to keep up with the expenses?
Exactly.
If I meant, I did have a conversation with Dieter, and I think he.
Come to the.
I think Dieter did indicate that East Orange was in the process of getting ready to have a rate increase. So when you look at the graph, it may, it looks as though East Orange is lower than Orange, but Dieter informed me that that's. but Dieter informed me that that's only because they have not completed their rate increase. They're getting, they're in the process of getting ready to do that.
Question.
Council President, I have a question.
Councilwoman Gomble.
You mentioned a quarterly increase rate for the water. What was that dollar amount? You said it was 17%, but you also mentioned the dollar.
Yes, it's about $15 per quarter.
Thank you.
Sure.
Six for sewer. Six for sewer.
Six dollars.
Eight percent. What, I guess, Chris, maybe this was in your contract, so right now, there has not been, there are a lot of items that have not been done for various reasons.
Correct.
But you've noticed them. Was that a consideration in your contract negotiations? To say we've already paid for, you haven't delivered, so...
Right, so what we wanted to do, Council President, is, we realized that there were some deficiencies, but we did not want to get bogged down in the back and forth. We really wanted to try and move towards having some type of an agreement in place. And that was necessary, that was necessary because United Water was really threatening to leave. They were saying, well, you know, hey, we don't have an agreement, so we're going to begin to demobilize. And in fact, they sent a letter to the city stating that they were going to demobilize, and during this demobilization period, they were going to charge the city an additional 10% on top of what they were charging us, even though the contract doesn't allow for them to do that. But be that as it may, and we knew that we had to have a licensed operator. We wanted to give the city some time in order to review all of this information, and really take the time to digest it, and then make a determination on, you know, how we wanted to move forward. One of the things that Julius didn't talk about, I don't believe, is, but it's inside the report, is a view on what we would look like in terms of cost if we operated the system ourselves, or we continue to contract it out. And so that's something that we really need to take a look at. But I said that we needed to have a licensed operator on, and so we have moved to negotiate a one-year contract with United Water. And once we do that, then we're going to come back and deal with some of these other issues, the non-performance issues. We have a cost value of what those non-performance issues are. It's about $126,000, I think, for over a two-year period. If we had gone back and looked further, we would probably find more. But what we have now is $126,000, and I think that's $102,000. You have a question?
No, no, they're talking. Go ahead.
I believe that's it. Many of these matters are being part of the negotiation. I understand, Mr. ...
Just be careful, okay, just be careful with you, okay. Just limit your comments in terms of negotiate, just...
Okay, so at any rate, we are in the process of working with United Water to negotiate a one-year contract.
So we're out of contract right now. Are we on a month-to-month, or do we...
We are continuing the month-to-month.
And the month-to-month is in the current rate?
It's the current rate, right. Plus the 10% that, the 10% that they have added on top of that, but the city has not paid that 10%.
So, okay, okay. Councilmembers, any question before, Ms. Mowley? Okay, thank you, Mr. Julius, and we look forward to talking to you. Mr. Smith, do you know when you'll be back with us to present the contract? Do you know how close?
We can discuss a closed session, but at this point, it's still a negotiation.
No, no, do you know how close you are to a contract negoti, to, bring in a contract?
It's moving at this point.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's, thank you. Okay, clerk, will you agenda?
Yes, we have resolutions and ordinances. The resolutions and ordinances to present that at tonight's meeting are listed on the attached regular meeting agenda. If any council member wishes to discuss any resolution or ordinance, it may be discussed at this time.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
I don't know, maybe, you want to look at 405-2013? The last two pages? Are they there by accident? Huh? That's not on tonight, right? I should say, I was going to...
405...
Yeah, the last two pages are there by accident.
Yes.
405, 2013.
Correct. Exactly. Some noted. Okay. 405, the last two pages, if you pull out your resolution 405, there are two additional pages that are attached by accident.
Thank you. Do you, to Mr. Matt?
Which, okay, which word?
405, 407, and 405.
405, still 405, councilwoman Williams?
I'm going to combine 405, 407. Are those monies already spent? Or is that money we are adding in addition to the budget?
Mr. Matt?
These are grants that are being added into the budget by a process known as a Chapter 159.
My question is, is that additional money, or has the money already been spent?
These funds are grants that have been received, and the only way to spend these funds is by adding them to the budget by a process known as Chapter 159.
So that means that when you add, that should increase our bottom line as far as the budget is concerned?
Absolutely not. Grants are for a specific purpose and can only be spent on that purpose. It has nothing to do with your regular operating budget.
But 407 is recycling, so the $81,000 is going to go toward...
What, the, which resolution are you referring to, council?
407, 2013.
407, okay.
It says general revenues, general, that's going to go toward...
Basically, I will have to look at the, at the award letter, but this is a recycling grant which is used for the purpose of solid waste, and it is awarded to most of the communities across the state. It is basically used for solid waste recycling. It has to be used for the specific purpose in the grant award letter. And this is true of all grants.
Then I want to move on to 48, 2013. You want to explain that to us, please? 48, 2013?
Yes. This particular, this particular item was originally approved by Resolution 283. There was a deficiency in the resolution which caused it to be, which caused it to be rejected by the state. And it is because the wrong year was in the resolution, and it was also missing the description of the program as well as the amount. So this is merely to correct what was missing from Resolution 283, dash 2013.
And I want you to go to the last two pages. Recreation, opportunity, individual disability personnel. So what you're saying is, based on if we, if this grant is approved, right?
Are you still referring to 408?
Yeah, I'm still on 408.
Okay.
2013. If this grant is approved, it's going to create a new personnel position at the amount of $75,000 annually?
Madam, uh, councilor, I would have to read the specifics of the grant, so I cannot answer that question at this time. This is a resolution that was already approved by this governing body, and it's merely housecleaning.
Well, we approved to put the application in.
That is correct.
Right. Approved for you to apply. And I think we need the, I need an explanation, I don't know about the rest of the council. When it says program coordinator is going to get paid $75,000 annually, and they're only going to spend three hours on this project, is that what the rest of you understand?
That's what it appears to be.
They work 35 hours a week, and just three hours of that 35 will go on this project.
Well, I guess, being that she already has another job here, she's going to get the money for that job, plus $75,000 for three hours on this project.
I think the better way to look at this is that this is not a matching grant, and if there is a grant that will make a difference to the city of Orange, we should be supportive of the application.
Mr. Matt, I don't think that's the debate here, and I don't think that's the issue. We already have that employee on board making an excess of, what, $60,000 a year? And then you're going to add another 75 to that, and only three hours on the project? I don't care where the money's coming from, whether it is a grant or not. That is my question. Is that what we're looking at?
Uh, councilor, I don't believe that there is a person listed in this grant application. If it is, if there is, I stand corrected, but I don't believe that there's a...
You're reading the same page out? It says name of employee.
Right.
You're reading the same thing I'm reading, right?
Um, the person who will be in charge of this program will not receive an additional amount over and above what he or she is making.
That's not what the grant says, Mr. ...
If someone is coming...
That's not what the grant says, and I'm going to leave it at that. So what I'm going to suggest, and another question, what is the difference than us passing this tonight or the next meeting in December?
The process will be undelayed, and I can't sit here and say to you that we have the time to move it to the next meeting. And again...
I'm going to suggest to the council that, until we get a better explanation, I think we need to table that one until the next meeting.
Mr., are you finished? I have a question on this. I have a question, are you finished?
On that one? I'm finished on that.
Okay, I have a question on this. Mr. Matt?
Yes.
You stated that the amendment was because it was deficient, so this agency is already awarding funds for 2014?
An application was already submitted, and the only reason they're back before you is because the resolution that you adopted previously was missing, it had the wrong year, and it was missing the program's description and the amount of funds.
And I do, I heard what you said, but I'm, I just want to be clear that this annual grant, we always, you're saying we do it a year in advance, or in a short, because when we signed it, it was for 2013, but now it's for 2014?
That is correct. It had the wrong year.
Okay. That's what Williams, when we approved the initial application, and he said it was, the last part of that, if I remember correctly, was not attached. So there's some new attachments there, which we weren't aware of. That's why I'm saying we need to figure out...
No, I just wanted to clarify on the agency awarding a year in advance.
Can I do the...
Yes.
51, 2013?
51.
And 52, 2013?
Yes. Councilwoman Hayes? Councilwoman Hayes?
So we're doing a rearranged topic, okay?
Does she show orders, Mr. Hayes?
Yes. Marty Mayes, Director of Planning and Development, DPW. 51 and 52 ordinance, 2013, our first reading, are both related, they're related to the school over on Oakwood Avenue. As you know, we had several complaints in terms of traffic and speeding around our schools. This is the second one. The first one had to deal with Park Avenue School. We received similar complaints about Oakwood Avenue. I say, a couple of weeks ago, myself and the engineer, we went out and we took a look at what is out there in terms of signage, street, what, street paintings, what's painted on the street in terms of, like, slowdown of school. And we also took a look at all of the crossings, where the people cross at. We also analyzed the street in terms of whether or not it needed some type of either speed bump, speed hump, or speed table. So this legislation is the first attempt at trying to correct some of those issues. The legislation has to be changed in order for the city to move forward with either different signage, or changing what's in the street, or providing speed bumps. So that's essentially what this legislation does.
That's what Williams, I have a concern, Mr. Director Mayes. The only concern I have is that if you were going to do that, it should have, now, this is my thoughts, my personal opinion, this is just my thoughts. And being boroughway, boroughway ends into Oakwood right in front of the school, why wouldn't you make the explicit hours? During the day when there's nobody, no children on the street, there's not a need to stop the cars. So it should be during the hours when the kids are going to school, getting out of school, not all day long, because then the traffic backs up back to freeway drive. So why couldn't we make this during the school hours?
We can still make it for school hours, but these two pieces have to be changed first in order to do that. So this, this legislation doesn't preclude that. This is just...
But I'm saying, but you're making it a three-way stop now.
Yes.
Why wouldn't you incorporate the hours there, when it should be a three-way stop? During the hours of such and such, it has to be a three-way stop. I mean, the legislation needs to be specific in what you're trying to do now, not change it later.
Councilwoman Hayes, through you, um, attorney Smith, can that, is that something we, it's the first reading, can we add that tonight?
Yes, we can.
You're just saying to add to amend it from like six, from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM?
No, the school, the kids...
From seven to nine, and from three to five, or something like that.
Seven to four, generally.
School gets out at 2:30, doesn't it?
Well, you have to give them time for the after-school programs as well, so is your norm to set seven...
Four thirty is when the last kids get out.
Yeah, so it's like seven to five, after school. Yeah, so seven to five, or something like that.
Yeah, during the hours, yeah, during the time when nobody's on any different times. You don't need to have a three-way stop there. And just, I mean, we've got enough traffic that's stopped in this city now. I mean, we need to sort of make sure that there's a flow during the day where you're not just sitting there for nothing.
I'm not opposed to that at all. Only thing I'm suggesting is, I'm, I'm not the engineer, so I can take that back to him, we could delay this or whatever. I just don't want to add hours into tonight without talking to him. That's my only...
Is it okay if we pull this until the next meeting?
Before we pull it, are there any other suggestions that he can take back to the engineer?
Well, I just, let me just, the second one. That, that doesn't say, just said May Street to delete the following streets and schedule. What is that?
Which number? I'm sorry.
51, 2013.
That is, that is based on the classification of... That is, that is based on the classification of the street now. The streets are classified in various ways, and that first one is just to change the classification of the street itself.
I still don't understand what you're trying to accomplish here.
With the stop sign being there, it would no longer be a through street.
Right, that's exactly-
Main Street to Central Avenue?
No, what I'm saying is that's why he has to have 51 in play in order to do 52.
Right, that's exactly right.
By saying the stop sign, then it's no longer a through street. Because in effect, you would have to stop sign. But now it is a through street.
Main Street, Oakwood Avenue, Main Street to Central Avenue.
Right.
Okay. But I, I just think that we need to, to, if you don't mind, I don't know if the council has any objections that we pull these until next meeting when he can define what-
Mr. Mays, do you have any objections?
No, I don't.
We have a discussion? Okay, so noted, okay. Council members, are there any other discussions of any other items?
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Did you want to do the bill this now? Or you want to wait till later?
We don't have. So, that would be, uh, 406-2013? All right, so we want to start. Council members, there was, there was some conversation at previous council meeting that items should not be returned to the bill list without information being provided. The Law Department will be removing the $15,983 off of Page 2, but that's already done.
Councilwoman Williams-
And also the, yes, Councilwoman Eason?
Why you did it? Let's just put this on the record in the upfront. Mr. Matt?
Yes.
Every meeting, we come here, and we have the same discussions over the same items. And this has been over a month, requesting information on the same things. Your office has failed to provide any explanation of any of the things that we have pulled off this bill list for the last month. But every meeting, we have the same items back on the list. So, just me just say, make it very clear. Do not add those items again unless you have provided the council with some explanation and some purchase orders to let us know what these items are. We go through this, it's just a waste of time. Every meeting, we're pulling off the same thing. You have, between each meeting, they give us, we're not getting anything. So, don't put them back until you give us an explanation.
If you can be specific, Counselor.
We are, we are going to list them right now.
Council, we can start with Page 1, Councilwoman Eason.
And council members, you can chime in as we go along, because some things we might have overlooked.
Is anything on Page 1?
No.
Page 2, we've already said the, the professional services of the Law Department, $15,983 will be removed.
And then we doing the 15 for, 15 for the 195?
Okay. Is that at Page 3?
But we had asked for names and why these courses were pertinent to their job.
Okay. Page 3? Page 4, resolve medical-
Council President? With your- Do we do this at every? I'm pretty sure we had this on the bill list, uh, the last meeting. Actually, it's Page 2 and 3. And it's for memory cards again? That keeps coming up.
3182, who explained that at the last meeting?
But what happened was last meeting, Councilwoman Williams, there was two, it was a duplicate?
It's still there.
So, they have removed one?
No, it's both of them still there.
But there are two here now.
They're still there.
One's on 2, and one's on 3. And that's what I'm asking them.
Page 2, that Page 3 has the same P.O. number, same amount. Everything's the same. We asked for clarification to see if that's not a duplication, because everything's the same.
The bottom of Page 2?
Page 2 at the bottom.
Yes.
And then you go to Page 3.
Okay.
Everything is the P.O. number, everything is the invoice number, everything is completely the same.
The bottom and the top of Page?
No, Page 2. And then if you go down to Page 3?
Almost the middle on Page 3.
Okay.
You see it?
Office materials and supplies.
3182.
Memory cards.
And could you provide the council with the purchase orders for those items?
Obviously, upon looking at that, it does appear to be a duplicate. So, I will-
Okay, so that was, it was supposed to be done-
So, I will certainly-
Shut me to, okay. So, we're on Page?
So, those are coming off?
So, that's coming off?
Right. So, Page, yes. Page 4, 5, and 6 are payments. So, go into Page 7.
The cars are for the Police Department, so-
Right. And they were budgeted for.
Yes.
And those police vehicles are fully equipped. Captain, is there, you have any questions? Anybody have, they're fully equipped, brand-new cars, SUV, and two Fords with all of the mechanisms inside for the police to do their work. Are there any questions that we have for the Police Department on that?
No, we just need to make sure we get those numbers to Mr. Lurch for the budget part that he gave us last night.
Yes.
And also, there's, Councilwoman, you're going to make a note, there's also $50,000 that we need to add to that is probably not on this bill list for guns and holsters, and that's going to hit this bill, that's going to hit this budget.
And that's a part of the 130, the amount that was budgeted for, for equipment for the Police Department?
They probably went a little over, though.
Okay, so Page 7, anything?
Well, Orange Fitness.
Were we, Page 7?
Yeah, that's saying, 40934.
Miss, I missed it. So, Page 7?
Yeah, 40934, put it bottom. Um, Mr. Matt, we had asked for a copy of that contract.
Page?
Page 7, under Orange Police Department Vehicle Repair and Maintenance. The 40934, um-
I believe that the council was provided with a copy of the contract, namely, namely, the purchase order. This is not a contract that is required to be awarded by the governing body. This is less than the quote threshold, which, when the purchase order is signed by both parties, it is the contract under the local public contracts law. And so, there's no other contract other than the purchase order.
Councilwoman Williams, through you to, Mr. Matt, I beg to differ. I saw the contract, I just don't have a copy of it. And also, this is not a car wash. This is a fitness center. So, I guess my question is, how would you enter into a car wa, for car washes, and it's not even a car wash?
I believe that the council members were provided with a copy of the purchase order as well as-
We have the purchase order?
Right. And you have everything that we have. You have everything that we have.
Council, Director, Matt, is your position that a car wash, you would not have to go out to bid for?
This is the washing of cars.
No, car wash services that we have previously had under contract. But in your position, this did not need to go out to bid?
It is my position, as a qualified purchasing agent, that the bid threshold is $36,000. The pay-to-play threshold is 17.5. The quote threshold is 15% of the bid threshold, which is $5,400. We do not have to go out for a contract for anything. We do not have to go to bid for anything that is below the bid threshold. We do not.
Last I checked with the local finance board, that is not true, because the council took no action to give you that authority. That is not true. Check with the local finance board in Trenton. That's not true.
Listen, Matt, we had a discussion. We're going to remove this, and we'll provide your documents that support you, and we'll go from there to the next meeting.
Council President?
Councilwoman Eason?
When you finish?
Yes, Councilwoman Eason?
I'm asking the council to pay, to pay this gentleman. I think it's round out between $1,200 and $1,300. In terms of, you're right, it's not a standard, typical car wash, but Mr. Bashir was able to have the cars pulled into his bay. He went and brought car wash materials. He washed the exterior of the cars at $4 per, which is the standard rate of the previous and the current contractor, which we, which we, I believe we approved maybe two, two city council meetings ago. And so, and the issue was that he provided the service. The purchase order was put in all of the council, and if other council members have concern, that's fine. I'm just expressing mine if I, if I may. And that, this has been on the, on the bill list for the last, you know, two, three months, whatever, whatever the timeframe is. And it's never issued that he provided the services. So, I, I don't know why we can't pay him the $1,200. Basically, the cars would go into the bay. Even in the purchase order, I think we saw the time schedules. It was X amount of hours Monday through Friday, and then X amount of hours on Saturday or Sunday. These were kids and some parents that literally washed only the exteriors of the cars, the police officers, the firemen, whomever, whomever. I wasn't there, no, I was not there. They would pull up, either the policeman would sit inside of the car, or either he would lock the car and get out. And so, they had the materials to wash the car. I mean, most of us, I don't know about anybody else here.
Councilwoman Abdul Rashid, I just, just, let me just, no, let me just, the question, and I just don't want to spend a lot of time here, because we've been doing this week after week. The question is not, but let me just, let me just try to get there quicker.
Other council members talk as long as they want.
No, I'm not, Councilman, Councilman Abdul Rashid, please. If you just hear me out, I just want to say that, because it's not an issue of service, it's an issue of the validity of the contract.
I know, but I, I think I know, I'm well versed in what the issues are.
But you're, but you're, I guess what I'm having-
But again, I would, I would ask my council members to vote in favor of this here bill. Thank you. And I would like to be able to talk- But I would like to be able to talk as long as Councilman Eason do on budget items.
Councilman Abdul Rashid, please. But I do make sense.
That's what I'm saying, please.
Councilwoman Eason, can you vote for you? Please stop. The question, I think, all-
I know what the question is.
Councilman Abdul Rashid.
But you don't have to tell me what the question is.
But, but Councilman, for clarification.
I don't need any clarification.
Well, I'm stating it for clarification.
I wanted to state.
Okay. Council members, I've had a discussion with Mr. Matt, and there has been questions, and, Mr. Smith, the question of the validity of the contract is what's here. And if Mr. Matt, or your department could provide that, it's the issue of the contract, and what needs to come before this council and what does not. And that may require an opinion and believe that, and I don't believe that it would be proper to pay for the services, because it's almost proceeding. So, if we can deal with that, and we've been asking for it, excuse me, for several weeks and have not received that.
Now, what are you asking for, Counsel President?
I'm sorry, the contract, the validity of the contract, the per, the contract needing to come before this council. And I understand your position-
The $1,200?
Of the quality, of the QPA. However, this is a very common service. So, I, we just need to make sure that we're not putting this body in jeopardy by signing off on something, especially in the manner what's done. And we all agree that the service was provided. And that's the question we've been asking for three weeks, for three council meetings, Mr. Matt.
Well, we'd be happy to provide an opinion to you. But let's be clear, in the concept of quantum merit, services rendered, ultimately, you know what will have to happen. But we have no problem providing-
And I think that was the one thing that has not been answered. I think the P.O. has been given to show that the services were rendered, but that one question was not answered.
Council President? The other thing with this contract concerns me is that I don't know if there's a clause in there for safety. For example, some of the young kids might be working or washing a car. Anything could happen, someone could get hurt. So, where's the li, what is the liability for? So, all that needs to be discussed.
Councilwoman Williams, I just want to read one thing. And Mr. Matt said, in the statement, this says to Mr. Raymond Wingfield, it says, and I don't think-
I'm sorry, can you just be clear? What are you reading?
I'm reading the, this that we all got in our mailbox.
Okay, from the Orange Fitness Center?
Yeah. And I don't think any of us is disputing that Bashir needs to get paid. But we just want to make sure that we put this on the record so this does not happen in the future. You know, somebody made a mistake. Mr. Winfield, thank you for taking the time to receive this proposal. Where is the proposal? I'm not saying anything, but I'm just reading a note. It's all public knowledge. Anybody can read this. Doesn't have to go into executive session. This is public knowledge. Well, it's public knowledge. You put it in everybody's mailbox, you didn't have it in a sealed envelope.
Councilwoman Eason and Director Smith, we can see right there.
To receive this proposal on behalf of the car wash services for the City of Orange Township Vehicles.
Chair.
Council, stop, Councilwoman Eason, Attorney Smith?
Let me ask that. Want to discuss Mr. Winfield?
I don't think we're discussing Mr. Winfield. We're discussing the memo.
Exactly. We're not talking about him.
But here's what we're going to do. The memo is available in the clerk's office. And Councilwoman Eason, we're going to reserve it until Attorney Smith or Mr. Matt can respond to us and Legislative Research Officer. The question is, Mr. Matt believes that, as a QPA, he could award the services for car wash for $1,200, and the contract did not need to come before this council. It does not need to be responded to, but we all need to be prepared for December 17. There is a proposal that was, I'm assuming was asked and sent by the person who provided the services. However, the question is, no matter how much, because of the type of services, did it have to come before this council? That's the question. The next, moving-
So, we move it, are we taking out the 40934?
Yes, we are. And go into Page 8? Nothing? Page 9? 10? Go ahead, 11? Page 12 would be the $40 at the top, correct?
Right. The $66?
$66. The $23.95, that whole $499.28. Moving to Page 13?
Hold on, Councilwoman.
Yes.
Did we get it, what were the level, what, didn't we pull the level wallets off the last time? That was on the last-
What page are you on?
The same page, that, or Page 12.
The next item out to the 499.38.
Yeah, we pulled that off the last time. We needed to see a purchase. What were, somebody was going to explain what they were for.
Okay. We can move it if we do get the answers. 6504? Moving to Page 13? Quick question for Mr. Matt. $900 in front setters? The 946.50? Do you know where those front setters are? Or who got those?
This was for, this is for the senior Christmas party scheduled for December 12.
Page 13.
Oh, Page 13. And they're four inches, four inches, right?
Four and seven.
Mr. Matt, could we have?
Four and seven.
Can we see the purchase order for that? Can we see the purchase order for that, because, I mean, I order them for the church, and I get the usual, there's not that much.
Counselor, we can show you any purchase order that you would like to see.
But $946 for conceters? And you talking about a layoff?
Does your request to remove that, Councilwoman Easton?
It's up to the council.
I think the 1062, did we receive any information on that, 106255?
No.
106255. Right, right below it.
So you're going to take off the 94650?
1062 were for veterans.
1,00655.
The 11,000, I believe the 11,000, I think we, we asked to remove those, because we wanted to know out of what account they were coming from, and how would they, in light of the proposed layoffs, these monies being spent.
But 11,407.
Right.
Going down.
Right.
And the $800 for rental equipment, crane and parts. Free works. Mr. Matt, you know what that was for?
What, what page are you on, Counselor?
Mr. Mays, page 14, Director Mays is going to address that. Rental equipment, crane parts, free works.
Marty Mays, Director of Planning, PVW. The $800 for the crane rental was for the central baseball field project. What happened was, at one point, as you all know, we were not able, or we didn't think we're going, we're going to be able to fund any lights. So instead of destroying the lights that were already there, although the lights are older, we rented, we rented a crane, and we removed those lights, thinking that we may have to reuse those lights, and that's why we rented the crane. So those, the lights, the existing lights that were there, were removed and stored.
Now, you said you're thinking, so are you sure that you will be able to use the lights?
No, what happened was, on the last council meeting, you saw, when we passed a change order for four brand new lights, those lights that were there were from the 70s, and so we didn't know at that time what was going to happen, so we didn't want to destroy them, we tried to save them. So that's what the 800 for the crane rental was for.
And where are these lights, I mean, so what are you doing with the lights now? I mean, because you saved them, so.
We still have the lights, and as you know, the project itself really requires eight lights. We were able to find money to fund four of the eight, and the four lights that we are going to, brand new lights that we are going to fund, are going to be utilized for the football field, so that the recreation football can play and practice at night, which is the same thing that they have now.
But are you going to use these lights?
We haven't, we haven't decided, because they're from the 70s, it's hard to find the parts, and lights are so much different now, as we all know, and.
And I think the last item is the 10698.
What page?
15. We have a summer, a summer food program, I don't know why it would be necessary for anybody spending out of pocket money.
No, actually, it was the whole item, the 152. Mr. Matt, on this summer food, we were cited for not getting our reimbursement for the previous grant because our receipts, and before we paid this, we wanted to ensure that the application had been responded to properly, and that it was going, that we were going to receive the monies, that reimbursed monies. Do you know how this application process is going?
I will find out for you, Council President.
Okay, so we need to wait on that.
106.
Yeah, so 152, $873.70, and I believe there was a list that Mr. Lurch is going to provide us with several grants that are not being reimbursed for various reasons.
Council President, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman.
So the entire amount under summer food?
This is a reimbursable grant, but if you don't submit the receipt, you don't get reimbursed. So the question is, how are we going through the application, the application process? Previously, we've been cited that we were not reimbursed, because it was not properly done.
Are we removing it now, temporarily?
Yes. Until we, Mr. Matt has the opportunity to do the research to ensure that the receipts are in place. And this is, and we've actually asked this question before.
So, Council President, what exactly do you need?
This is a reimbursable grant, the summer food program. It was not reimbursed previously, because the receipts were not submitted. So I would like you, or whomever you dedicate to do it, to see how this application process is going, in terms of us being reimbursed this money.
So you're referring to?
The summer food.
The submission for reimbursement, not an application for a grant, you're referring?
For the summer food program, yes.
I just want to be clear, an application for a grant is separate from a reimbursement?
No, not that, we got approval for the grant. That's done, this council has accepted it, however, the reimbursements, we have not received previously, because in the process of submitting the receipts for the reimbursements, it was not done properly or not done, so we did not get the reimbursements.
So we're taking off all 1528?
152, yes.
Okay.
Councilwoman Williams, on the last bill, there was a check paid that we had taken off, and I think our question was, did somebody, was that vendor paid? It was for $85. Mr. Matt, could you look at the last bill list and see that one check, and explain to us, was that a payment, or did somebody reimburse us that money? On the last bill list, I think it's on the last or the second page. Because I, I just want to check, because I want to make sure that as we pull things off this list, that you're not paying them anyway.
On the last page.
I have, you have the last bill list, would you, Mr. Matt?
No, I don't have the last bill.
I have it, but, so. I will show it to you.
It's down there where it's.
Let me give it over to Councilwoman Easton, and you can, Councilwoman Easton, could you give it, bring it back, let's see. Let me see. So for clarification, so we could be, so added up the time, before, prior to the vote, let's go back to the list, it's page two for 1,500, Council, Councilwoman Marable?
Council President, I was not here for the initial part of this discussion, can I discuss an item on page one before you?
Yes.
There is a $3,258 annual dues fee to the National Legal Cities, does anyone know what that is?
That is annual membership for the National Legal Cities, that invoices were going to Dwight, and not coming to the clerk, well, they were going to the clerk, and nobody were getting them, and they called to inquire that we were delinquent.
Okay, it seems to suggest, though, 2013 through 2014, that suggests prospective dues.
I think it brings us, Mr. Matt, does it bring us current?
This will bring us current, as well as it would pay the dues for the full year, I believe.
And the past?
Well, we just, okay, so was it, and how many past dues was?
I don't recall how many, but there were a number of invoices that were past dues.
It was, but there were invoices going to Dwight's email that were not given over to the financial department.
Does anyone know what the amount of an annual?
Do you remember this?
Yes, that was, that was the amount, 3,258.
No, what's the annual amount? This is a.
The yearly amount, this is. Oh, no, because that was the only amount that I was told by the NLC.
Well, let's assume this.
And it was current to 2014, to include 2014.
Do you, Mr. Matt, do you recall?
I don't recall.
Do you want to remove it till you see it?
Well, I can only go by what's here, it says 2013, 2014, so I'm assuming, and maybe it's not correct to make this assumption, that 3,258 represents two years' worth of dues.
Well, okay.
I mean, I don't know whether that's a reasonable assumption or not, but it says two years. I, I've just never heard of anyone charging that kind of dues.
Well, it has been a dues that we've paid for several years, and it's always budgeted for, in the annual budget, but when you call, Ms. Smith, I actually gave it to Ms. Smith, to the gentleman, did, did he, we have to get the information, do you want to remove it, did we get it?
I would like to, because, and again, this, this is specific to the city council, is, is the council the only participant in that organization?
No, it comes out of the council's budget, but it's for the City of Orange, to be a participating city.
They base it on the population, and that is, they lost, 3,000, it's based on 30,400 people, and there was a specific price that was quoted to me, which would pay us up to include the 2014 year.
Wow, that must be paying six figures.
It's a yearly cost.
We'll get the, so we'll remove it and get the invoice.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's it.
Council President, can I provide some information on page two and three?
Page two, okay.
Page two, the $1,541 basically pertains to staff development, which the administration's position is that we've got to develop our staff, and we've got to cross train employees, and so, as, as well as the CFO is required to take continuing education units, and that is a part of the consideration as well. As to the item at the bottom of the page, we used to purchase cameras from office concerts.
Mr. Matt, this is duplication of the bottom.
They're for different departments.
But it's.
They're for different departments.
Even though it's actually the same.
Different departments, so it's not a duplicate.
But why would the invoice number be the same? Why would the PO and everything, why would everything be the same? So why wouldn't it be one, why wouldn't it be under one invoice number?
Because it's a reimbursement. Office concerts discontinued the product, and an employee went out and purchased these from Walmart, for two different departments.
I understand that. Okay, so you, so you split the bill, so it can come out of each department, basically what you're saying.
Exactly.
Council President?
Councilwoman Marable?
Just an observation regarding the items that Mr. Matt was discussing, employee training, $1,115 was for a tax collection course, are you suggesting, sir, that's a continuing education course?
No. The continuing education pertains to the third item of those four.
The $89? Just the $89?
Yes, that's correct.
Now, so this is your.
Well, then I guess my question is, what is the $1,115?
That is for another employee in the department who is being cross trained in the tax collection process, and the, there is also another employee who is being cross trained in another finance professional developmental course.
And I believe the question on those, Mr. Matt, is that, I know there was back and forth with the legal department about putting the names on there, but council members have asked for supporting documents, and they have not been received.
So we still need supporting documents?
So what do you need, a purchase order, the invoice, what do you need? I will provide what you need.
Because the PO will actually say whom, whom it was.
So you need a PO?
Right.
Give us both.
We need both.
PO and the invoice?
And the invoice.
Okay.
And that will be for all four? Even for the CEUs?
Yes, we will provide you all of those purchase orders that are listed.
Okay, so going back to page one, just for clarification, we're removing $3,258 from page one. From page two, we are removing 1,54195 plus $15,983. We're understanding now that the 31182 was a reimbursement, and they split it, because it was for two different departments, so the cost can come out of those two departments.
So we're leaving those on?
Moving to page 12. $40, 49928, and 6504. Going to page 13.
Council President?
Yes, tell me.
Those items on page, the $40, for example, these are for the national night out, and the employee incurred expenses pertaining to national night out, and this is.
And we, and we must not have been communicated, we just asked for the supporting documents, we have not received.
So again, the purchase order and the invoice?
Right.
Okay.
Page 12?
Yes.
How can the oil change be for national night out?
Yeah, when, when the date is 7/11/13, national night out, the first Tuesday in August.
You had an oil change on national night out?
No. We have national oil change.
Is that a question? Oh, God. So, so until we get supporting documents, we'll take them on.
Council President?
Go ahead, I'm sorry. $40, 49928, 6504.
Council President, if I may?
Councilman Marable?
Yeah, I apologize again, I came in on the tail end of the discussion, when Councilman Abdul Rashid, I'm assuming, was discussing the Orange Fitness Center billing.
We've discussed it, Councilman Marable, the question that councilmen, that everybody's going to respond to, is the basis of the contract. Was that a contract that we could have entered into? We all agree that the services have been rendered, we're looking at the contract, and that's where we are. So we all agree that the services have been rendered, we're looking at the validity of the contract.
Councilwoman Marable, I agree that it should be paid tonight, that's what I agree with.
And, and Councilman Corbett also raised the question in terms of liability, because children were involved as well.
And no kids got hurt? No kids got hurt.
So we're just waiting for a response from the legal department at the next meeting, and they will, we're working with the Legislative Research Office, because Mr. Matt, just to bring you up, is, he is a qualified purchasing agent, and for amount of 1,200, he did not need to come to this council for a contract, but because of the type of services, we're just asking, are we sure? And that's, and they're going to be part of response. And we've asked attorney for, with several times, we have not gotten, but we will get it on December 17.
I appreciate the recap, can I be heard now?
Not if it's about services being, we agree that the services have been rendered. If it's about the, Councilman?
I'm just saying, I would like to hear him, I'm curious what he has to say.
No, I, I'm not speaking to that, I am indirectly, but you, you will recall that I have raised this issue at prior council meetings, that we cannot just keep kicking this can down the street and saying, we're waiting for something at the next meeting, and it has been two full months. Now, at some point, it either becomes a disciplinary question, or we need to pay it. And I'm not advocating for paying it, what I'm saying is, we can't keep doing what we're doing, that's all I'm saying.
Councilman Marable, we have a date certain of December 17.
Yeah, that was supposed to be tonight.
Okay.
Go back and watch the, watch, well, the tapes aren't available anymore, but listen to the meeting. You know, listen to the meeting, I made the same point, and I was assured next time.
We agreed, we already went that route, Mr. Matt, we have received nothing, so that's why I said earlier, until he gives us what we need, don't bring the things back.
No, no, that's wrong, you didn't hear what I said, at some point, you have an obligation of good faith to the person who rendered the service, or it becomes a disciplinary action. That, that's, that's it.
Council, I mean, Director Matt?
My suggestion, Council President, is that any items that the governing body needs that's pulled off the bill list, so that we are clear, I think it is best communicated to the finance department through the clerk, so that there's a record, she is the clerk.
Mr. Matt, I'm going to respectfully disagree with you. You're here at this meeting tonight, and we are communicating it to you directly, and I'm repeating it to you several times, so it is my hope that you're taking notes, and I'm, that's why I'm going back over it, and I will say it again, once we do the bill list, that, you know, that you take ownership of your department and remove these items, and have the items that we need, and some would need to be in conjunction with the law office.
You're referring to meetings that I was not at?
I agree, and we're going, and I've stated, I'm sorry that it was not communicated to you, however, it is being communicated to you tonight.
And you do have a record of it, because we do have a recording going.
But you can, you should. We gave it to Ms. Knight.
Okay, so Ms. Knight does have.
After every meeting, she gets it.
Going to page 13, removing, and Mr. Matt, same thing, the supporting document. 94650, 106255, 11,000, I'm on page 14 now, I'm sorry, 11,407.8.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Page 13, 94650.
Right.
1,06255.
Okay.
Page 14, 11,407.8. Page 14, 40933. Page 16, 152,873.70, Mr. Matt, that's in regards to the process of the reimbursements.
What number is that, 106?
No, page 16. No, page sixteen. The sum of food, the total amount. You got it? Time to pay sixteen?
So what do you want?
Mr. Map, we just talked about this in three minutes. The reimbursement process. Where are we at the, with the reimbursement? Are we at the standard? Are we likely to get reimbursed for these funds? I'm asking. We have not...
You stated that for the hundred and six dollars and ninety-eight cents. So if you need that for these items...
No, I did not. I said for the hundred, the total amount, for the hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy cents.
Okay.
For the total amount. And what I have said is, previously, there are, there are several grants that are coming down that we're not getting reimbursed for non-compliance. And I'm asking you, can you make sure that we are being compliant in terms of reimburse, submitting the proper paperwork? And I believe that's it, council members?
Council President?
Yes.
You said one oh six ninety-eight on page fifteen. Isn't that a part of the one...
No, that's why I said page sixteen, one fifty-two, eight hundred and seventy-three.
Okay, okay, so that's not included. Okay. I mean, it's all included.
Right.
Thank you.
And Council President, you already have the information for the four hundred and nine dollars and thirty-three cents that pertains to the car wash.
Mr. Map, it's a question of the contract.
I told you, you have everything we have.
Ms. Smith will be responding about the contract. Council members, are there any more items?
Yeah, we did. Yeah, no? Make a motion for a five-minute break.
Just a second. Council members, before we close, are there any other items for discussion? No? Motion to close? Second. We'll be on a five-minute break. Second by Councilwoman McGaw.
Well, now we don't have...
Councilman, Councilman Hassan?
We don't have a floor now.
Now we sure do.
That's your do.
Do you care about it? I mean, you get your point.
We're sitting here, we care.
Enough.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Enough.
Go ahead. Ten C C, go ahead. Go ahead, let's start, let's start.
This is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Orange Township, held in the council chambers of City Hall, twenty-nine North Day Street, Orange, New Jersey. The meeting would be, is held on Tuesday, December 3rd, 2013, immediately following the conference meeting. Doing a roll call for council members. Councilmember Abdul Rashid.
Excuse me. Pledge of allegiance.
Oh, so sorry.
Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That will do it, roll call. Councilmembers. Abdul Rashid. Councilmember Corbett.
Here.
Councilmember Easton.
Here.
Councilmember Gob Butler.
Present.
Councilmember Jones Bow.
Here.
Councilmember Marable.
Yes.
Council President Williams. Also present, Ms. Smith, Deputy Municipal Clerk. Mr. Smith, City Attorney. Mr. Map, Acting Business Administrator. Mr. Harris, Legislative Research Officer. And Ms. Mayor from the clerk's office. Requirement of NJSA 10 colon 4-9 at set, the sunshine law has been met, and notice of this meeting was sent to the Star Ledger and published in the Record Transcript on July 18th, 2013, posted on the bulletin board in City Hall and filed in the office of the municipal clerk. I need the approval from the... I need the approval for the minutes for November 6, 2013, conference and regular meeting.
Second. It's moved by Councilwoman Jones Bell, seconded by Councilwoman Easton. On the motion? Seeing none. Roll call.
Councilmember Abdul Rashid is not present right now. Councilmember Corbett?
Yes.
Councilmember Easton?
Yes.
Councilmember Gar Butler?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Merbil?
Yes.
Council President Williams is not here right now. Motion passes. Five yeas, two absent.
Reports. Are there any committee reports? Councilor reports? No report on that.
No Oprah reports? There are no Oprah reports in communications and petitions? There were no communications or petitions? Citizens comments. For seal into Section 10-4, for the city code of the City of Orange Township, each person addressing the council shall step up to the microphone, shall give his or her name and an honorable tone for the record, unless further time is granted by the presiding officer, shall limit his or her address to 10 minutes. Also, the public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner. And derogatory, abusive, or threatening statements will not be permitted. The Chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order and terminate any further comments.
Mr. Jamie Anderson?
Good evening, Jamie Anderson, Tremont Avenue. I just want to say that we had another successful year at the Orange Fry Department for Thanksgiving. The last plate count before we started giving out seconds was over 300, so it was very, very, it's heartwarming. And I just, I want to thank some people, you know, because year after year, you know, a lot of people give of themselves, they give donations, you know, and rarely get thanks, get thanks from us. I want to thank Jeff Fell from Epstein's, Steve at GNS on Main Street, Main Street Farmer's Market, Dunkin' Donuts, Joe's Market, Bravo Supermarket. And even though he kept telling me not to, he can't beat me. So Manny Munoz, the Wake Firm Company, Sanitary Bakery, Public Works Department, they were great. The Public Works Department helped out a whole lot before, during, and after. Danny from La Bredy's, the Orange Health Department, Assemblyman Tom Giblin, PaveCon. I want to thank the mayor for coming and helping. Councilwoman Butler for volunteering and her donations. Councilman Corbett, Councilman Abdul Rashid, Councilwoman Williams, Ray and his new bride, Toni, Yvonne and Pam, Paramount Properties, Lucy and Leia from Just Like Nonos. Every year, they help us with Thanksgiving and Christmas, and they're just great, great females. All the Orange Fry Fighters and their families, especially those that were off duty, you know, they, some of them travel a distance to come here just, you know, to help, and their families too, their children and wives and everything. Especially Captain Elvin Padilla, he took control and he owned this thing, and it was, it's because of him that this, this thing was great. The Orange Board of Ed, and especially Lincoln Avenue School, all the students and fraternities, and if I forgot anyone, please charge it to my head, not my heart. I thank everyone who helped. Like I said, again, it was great. Everyone volunteered their time, money, or items. God bless you all. But, Christmas is next. So, we're getting ready for that now. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Mr. Jeffrey Fell.
Good evening, my name is Jeffrey Fell, a local businessman whose local business address is 268 Main Street, Orange, New Jersey. As my custom, I posted various heads-up comments on the city's public website, www njcom, prior to this meeting. I first want to give thanks, I think, to the city's clerk's office, who in the last week was able to post after the municipal municipalities conference, basically post August 7, 2013 minutes. I also want to thank the clerk's office for documenting their attempts to get documents through Oprah and the administration, the Warren administration's failure to produce documents to them. That ties into, before we were having discussion about the bill list, there's one item you did not release, there's an item around page 16 from the municipal insurance fund to a large law firm that's pending a lot of, I think, failed litigation. I did not receive any of the requisitions or time summaries or the retention resolutions, and I would ask you that you should be throwing that consideration of those monies because being paid, because for the same reasons that you're pulling the monies for the other insurance, not the labor attorney earlier and their things. We're getting to a very difficult area here, and also I want to thank the stakeholders who are now posting the minute of the videotapes of the meetings on the website. What goes on here is now going viral. Please be careful. We should remember, we got a couple anniversaries coming up. On December 8, 2010, was basically Dwight Mitchell's last day of work, full-time. That's almost three years ago. In January 2011, which is approximately three years ago, there was litigation in front of Assistant Judge Costello regarding the first layoffs and furloughs and that whole things, and we should not forget what Assistant Judge Costello told this governing body about dereliction of duties. And the reason I raise that is that a lot of things have happened in litigation in the last two and a half weeks, and this council needs to start monitoring them. Whether you're talking about the article appeared in the Star Ledger, the allegations, I'm not going to say what's facts, there's allegations regarding a former fire chief, there's allegations regarding a former city, Assistant City Attorney. At the last city council meeting, there was a walk-on settlement agreement regarding Judy Rothenberger and the litigation costs. To this date, I don't think stakeholders know how much money the city paid out in that litigation, whether out in settlement and litigation costs. Also, there was an article about the Orange Reservoir. About two meetings ago, there was talk about a settlement, about $100,000. People behind this podium never got to terms of it, but then we find out a couple weeks later that the county's putting about 2.1 million dollars in additional funding into that project. In the last few weeks, outside Defense Council wrote a letter to the Assignment Judge in Essex County telling that I was involved in forum shopping, that I was trying to get the case enough to judge Rothschild. I had a write to the Assignment Judge showing the case information statement saying I wanted the case assigned to Judge Rothschild. There were court ordered depositions that were supposed to occur a week ago. The city did not cancel, anticipatory breach of court order. On Friday, I'm supposed to be in court on a sanctions motion against the city. There's going to be issues whether protective order is going to be heard, and then there's going to be discussions of whether the city and the housing authority violated the terms of a court order. In one of my cases, in the last 75 days, three court orders have been entered. The city has violated two of those court orders in less than 75 days. We're getting to a serious situation. Also, an answer has been filed. In the answer, the city denies the allegation that there is a long-term tax abatement policy and procedure ordinance. To my knowledge, there is not one. In January, Councilwoman Williams, as far as the Finance Committee's report said, one of the things they have to consider is the adoption of a general, long-term tax abatement policy and procedure ordinance. We're getting to a point where answers are now being followed by the Warren administration, but on its face, that this council, if they would look at these things, are saying they're patently false. We're getting to a very scary situation. Earlier this evening, we had discussions by the housing authority. We were talking about 40 properties that they acquired on scattered things. One of the things that's going to come up during the reevaluations is when this housing property is put in the name of the housing authority, and it's in a redevelopment area, the housing authority does not pay real estate taxes on those properties. We need to start looking at the tax assessment books and records, because if you look at Walter G., the properties, when they talk about the tax assessments of property, it's the name of the housing authority. But when you look at the deal, the land might be in the name of the housing authority, but the structure, the infrastructure, is the name of a different entity, Walter G. LC1 or LC2. Some of our documents might be false. In addition, when you look at 340 Thomas Boulevard, Washington Manor, the city receives no payments for that building. And when I talk about Oprah, the city cannot, the city, the Warren administration, this building cannot find two cooperation agreements with the housing authority, one for 1950, one for 1969. I had to get them from the housing authority. The points of those cooperation agreements, because that's what Mr. Mason relied upon when you did your settlement, you've got a serious document retention problem here. And one of the things are, you need to read the pleadings, this council needs to read the cooperation agreements, and you have to read the cooperation agreement and compare it to the footnotes in the housing authority's financial agreements. They don't match up. And one of the things we're talking about is how do we become fair and equitable? Why certain entities are given properties and they don't have to pay real estate taxes? We heard that the stabilizing communities are bringing in students, but they're not paying any taxes to pay for them. That's one of the issues of fairness and equitable that we have to look at. I believe that's a neutral question, we have to start looking at it. I raise that also because yesterday in the Star Ledger, there was an op-ed article called Jersey City Shell Game with Taxes. It was written by a state legislature, and they're talking about pile agreements and the complex in the area that we're having, we're having about it. And so, I'm not a crazy people, but people in the state legislature are thinking we're having problems with the piles that we have to examine. You also have to look at the State Controls Report from July.
Mr. Fell, I just wanted to caution you, you spent your time on general issues, so you need to spend the rest of your time on...
On agenda. First one was bill list, that you should be removing another...
I gave you a minute on that, but I'm saying you have approximately three more minutes left, and that needs to be spent on agenda items.
Question, tax appeal. There's about three or four tax appeal judgment and settlements resolutions. To this date, can the administration tell you, in calendar year 2013, how much have you paid out in tax appeals and tax judgment? What has been the impact on our tax base? Every time there's a settlement, how much has our tax base gone down? And from what line items in the approved amended 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 budget do those payments come from? Because today, you're paying about approximately between $80,000 to $90,000 in additional monies. And finally...
Mr. Fell, third question, do you want to answer?
I got one more comment about the agenda, then I'll, these will be general questions. I don't think Mr. Mapp is capable to answer that question right now as to that, as the tax appeals. And following, today you're going to be appointing four people to the Citizens Advisory Budget Committee. I'm not against their nominations, but I think we should clarify upfront, what is the purpose and mission of the Citizens Advisory Budget Committee? Because in last calendar year, they did not issue a report, and I think everyone should be upfront what the council expects their duties to be, so when the people accept their nomination, they know what their responsibilities are. But if Mr. Mapp could answer my questions about the judgments, tax appeal judgments, I appreciate that.
I wish I were that good, but I don't walk around with those numbers in my head. He can get those numbers for you.
I thank you. I wish you were that good, but thank you.
Ms. Ingrid Williams?
Good evening. How's everybody?
Good evening.
I'm here on my resident post for the library. But I also kind of had other things from the agenda that I wanted to kind of loop into, into that point. I'm just listening to the plans for the development in Orange, and all through their information, they keep referring to Orange as a thriving city and how great it's going to be once they get this housing. And the only thing I could think of is how great a city is with all these new structures that are, you know, solar panels, but yet information-wise, we've been set back 100 years, maybe 99, because the library's 100 years old, right? So, I mean, 101, so my thing, my point is, with all this new innovation, new development, businesses coming in and out of the city, what's the point if the library, one of the really great structures and historical prominent architecture within the city is closed and has been closed since April? Just some food for thought as we pour millions of dollars into housing residents. The next item is referring to some of the information that we shared today for the quality of life with regards to the housing presentation. I was wondering, workforce housing kept ringing through my mind, but it's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that these are Orange Housing Authority projects?
Orange Development Corp.
Okay, is that separate?
It's an entity of Orange Housing.
Okay.
Separate nonprofit.
Okay. Because people have been displaced, so there is still a kind of an onus on the housing authority to find housing for specific low-income residents. And I would just like to know how many units are going to be set aside, because I'm sure there will be. I would like them in specific numbers, not percentages, because I would just like to know, you know, if it's 100 units, are 59 of them going to be low-income? Because then that kind of outweighs the workforce housing. How many families return to, when they displace them for the initial phase of their project? How many of those families that were displaced were returned back to the new structure? What are the social services plans, if any? Just when you have mixed development housing, because I'm sure there will be some low-income residents there. What do you, what is going to happen as far as rejuvenating the actual citizens that live within the community? I mean, I understand the community room, and that's always a great thing, but what about tutoring for the children? Any after-school programs that are going to be running out of there? Anything to help families manage their finances? Because even what they're working for is, the average household income in Orange is $40,000 a year, so how are you teaching people to manage their money? Make smart investments, plan for retirement. And I feel like a nonprofit organization that's going to be assuming property and then creating housing, because as he said, everybody needs a place to live, but we also need to retain the funds and financial stability to be able to pay for certain things. So just those types of questions. And, let's see, I think I have something else. What are the income requirements when he's talking about the workforce housing?
Directed, I believe, I believe every project is different, but it will be published in the paper.
Okay.
In terms of the social services, they are provided. And the housing authority meeting is the third, is it the third Thursday at 6:30 PM at the Housing Authority, which is at 340 Thomas Boulevard? I would, you know, just encourage you to go, because they do have the same type of public session where you can ask those questions, they can give you the specifics, and the social service director is generally there. I don't know if the one is there from Walter G., but I know one's provided at 340 is there, as well as Councilman Abdul Rashid is liaison, so he could probably speak to you specifically about it as well, as well as Councilman Jones Bell. But the components that you have, they are being responsive to those components. In terms of the percentage, I know at Walter G., there is a percentage of public housing. I don't know it right now off the top, but we can get it for you to see.
Okay.
Out of the X amount of units, how many are public housing, how many are affordable, how much are fair market value?
Okay.
Okay? And then, and that would be, I think, that's all your, in your regards to the library.
I just have one update. I received from the Director of the New Jersey Library Association, a communication that said that she was working with the library board to do a, I guess, book distribution event. The only information she had for me was it would be held December 14. So I just wanted to, she was looking for any programs or youth groups that might be invited. So, if anyone has any suggestions that I could relay to her, that would be great. And hopefully we hear some more information with regards to that in the next week or so.
Okay. Councilwoman Merrill, did you have a response? What are you looking like? No, you're just looking. Okay, okay.
I have a response, if I may.
Yes.
Fantastic. One, the next public housing, Orange Housing Authority meeting is at December the 19th at 340 Thomas Boulevard, which is their corporate headquarters, which they've been meeting there for like the last 150 years. With respect to this book handout, which is good, you might want to attempt to share that information with the Orange School District, which is located at 451 Lincoln Avenue, which is also their corporate headquarters.
Okay. Councilwoman Williams?
Councilwoman Williams? She, she was talking about a guide to managing your finances and investments. I just want to say, in the absence of, Orange does not have anything like that right now, but we do run a program at St. Matthew's AME Church on 336 Oakwood Avenue, and it's a guide to living debt-free. So, the number, you might want to call the office and they will tell you, I think they're getting ready to start a new class.
Free do's.
It's 973-678-1217. If you will call, they will give you the schedule. So, that's like something that we can do at the church that Orange does not offer, but it's a good program, so.
For clarification, they do have to do it, right?
Did you go through the program?
I don't know, but I'm familiar with that.
Yeah, so, I want to call the church.
And for clarification...
Now, we're trying, we don't have all of the resources, we're looking at other avenues so we can send our residents, so they can get the same information until Orange is able to offer something of that nature.
And for clarification, the housing authority does do, at the housing authority, they do wellness, they do a financial class for Walter G. residents, they do do. So, you, if you were saying specifically, those programs are within, yes, they are?
Yes, within the residence that the housing authority is responsible for.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Steve Eady, Eddie Eady? Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sorry.
Hello.
And you, Steve Eady, thanks.
Steve Eady, 239 Sterling Avenue?
Mm-hmm.
How is everyone?
Great.
My question to the council this evening regards police response time to non-emergency situations. I had an incident about two weeks ago. Car pulled up on the side of my house, I'm on the corner selling in Haxton, truck pulled up. Two individuals in a truck, they didn't look like familiar people from the neighborhood, so I'm a little suspect when people pull up on the side of the house and park, because in the past, I've had a problem with the local individuals who live in the neighborhood pulling up on the side of the house and getting high or drinking liquor, leaving their garbage after they finish, sit for about 10 minutes, 30 minutes, sometimes 40 minutes. So, I called the police department, it's in the afternoon on Saturday, to report a suspicious vehicle. I gave the occupants a chance to exit the vehicle to see if it was somebody familiar, going to visit somebody or not. After I was satisfied that they weren't getting out the truck, and since I didn't recognize it, I called the police department to report suspicious vehicle. The dispatch told me, you know, I interacted with the dispatch, he told me they would send somebody out. I waited for the police to arrive, it's about 10 minutes, and no one responded. In the meantime, the vehicle finished up and left. I called the police department again, got a female dispatch, and I was kind of disturbed by that point because no one had showed up. So, she and I kind of had words, I said, you know, well, what happened? Are you guys sending somebody or not? She said, well, what are they doing, sir? Anyway, long story short, I told her that the vehicle had now left, and the reason I was upset is because, I said, what if I had not been home? Then these people might have been here to rob the house. Okay? And I called, and you guys don't regularly patrol the area, so that's why I was upset. My question to the council is, and to the police department, is, is there any way to have a quicker response time, perhaps, in as much as is possible nowadays, to a non-emergency situation?
Captain Dunn.
Captain Dunn with the Orange Police Department, here on behalf of, for Director Sims. I spoke to Mr. Eady about this, this situation. I actually helped him back and had the pleasure of helping him with a similar situation back in 2009 and 2010. I am familiar with his, his current complaint, it's very similar to back then when we helped him with the same situation. He says that the incident occurred on Saturday afternoon, I explained to him it's very possible that we were very busy due to auto accidents and so forth. Not exactly sure why the delay in response, he told me it took the police unit about 10 minutes to respond there. So, for a non-emergency call on a Saturday afternoon, you know, that could be, that could be a typical response time to some degree, depending upon the amount of calls that we're receiving for emergency-type situations. So, I'm going to look into that, see...
I was going to say, review the tape to see if there's a protocol was...
Look into it, see if there's a delay. I have spoken to him at length about the situation that he's having over there on Sterling, and I think it takes the measures to correct that form like I did in 2009, 2010.
Okay. Captain, Mr. Eady, you can also, if available, take Councilman Corbett's card and Councilwoman Jones Bell, because they're the liaison for the police department, and should you not get an immediate response, you, you can call them. We pretty much pick our phones up 24/7.
I have been, but it's been very helpful.
Okay.
But I did want to just, the whole council about it.
Okay. All right, thank you. So, you'll have to review the tape and respond, and I'm sure he has your contacts, because he has to review the tape to see exactly what happened.
I'm sure we're not going to have any more problems like that regarding this.
So noted. Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Sims.
Councilwoman, if I may, I don't know whether Mr. Eady plans on leaving or not. I've had occasions, sir, to make similar calls to the police department, depending on the time of day and other circumstances, they may or may not come quickly. But I have had the conversations with them. What I'm told, and I think it makes sense, is that there is some value in recording a description of the vehicle, if you can, the license plate, because that's information that could be passed on to the police even if the vehicle leaves. And if that vehicle then is associated with a crime somewhere else, at least there's some information. So, I don't know if anyone shared that with you, or maybe that's something you're already doing, but there is value in doing that.
I definitely give them a description as best I can. If it's during the day, they get the full description. It's at night and I can't make out a plate from my vantage point, you know, where I surveil secretly, I give them the best I can, you know, as far as the type of car, four-door, how many occupants I can see. I see somebody lighting a cigarette or something, a phone, cellphone in the car. I, I don't know if I emphasized, my concern was, I think I did state that sometimes people are there doing things illegal. I have had the experience that people are pulled up on the side of my house and from my observation, and as much as I can tell from looking at them, they might be smoking or blunt or drinking, open can of beer or something in the car. And I'm a living, let live type of person. If you want to do that, I'm not condoning breaking the law, but if you want to do that, my feeling is go do it somewhere else. Don't do it around my house. And that's why I'm a little adamant with the police about their response times, because I felt like if they regularly patrol the area, perhaps people would be deterred from pulling up and feeling comfortable enough to sit there for an half hour, 15 minutes, 40 minutes, and basically have a party, you know? But yes, I have been given the information, license plate, description.
License plate's always the best.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Joshua, it's the council.
Joshua Sikolski, 392 Alcott, just started that, I'm here for, one of the reasons I'm here tonight is for, similar to Mr. Eady, Alcott still has similar problems. It has, you know, up and down the street, there are still people who loiter past the parking, it's not permit parking, they're there past the permit parking, they're technically, I guess, not parked because they're still in the vehicle, they're doing, having a party, just like Mr. Eady said. Many residents are frustrated because, again, the non-emergency response time is so long that they feel at some point they give up, why bother? They're, you know, sometimes it can be longer than a half an hour. In conjunction with that, those of us who do have permits are getting ticketed. I just had to, yeah, I got a ticket, I have my permit. I just got finished dealing with the court who sent me a failure to appear notice after I had dealt with the court clerk and they told me it was going to be dismissed. In any case, so there's, there's not good enforcement of the, of the parking permit. People who have permits are getting tickets, people who don't have permits aren't being ticketed regularly. There's not enough patrolling going on along that area to dissuade the activity, which was the whole point of the permit parking in the first place, was that there would be patrolling, people without would get ticketed. Now that that's off the table, from the agenda items, the water, the presentation on the water tonight, number one, I'd like to ask the council or the administration, when you contract these types of reports, and you get them hardbound and everything, have them give you a PDF and so that those of us who can't get here during business hours, it can be posted and we can read those with you. There are many things in there that I found incredibly disturbing to hear. Number one, besides the fact that we're paying 1.4 million a year and getting non-contract performance, and now we're negotiating with them, it shouldn't be a point of negotiation. It's documented that they failed to perform on the contract. We shouldn't pay them another nickel until we get some restitution for that and going forward, decide if we need another contractor or if we want to take it in-house, that's a decision. But I think it's disturbing that we're going to let them basically get away with non-performance. The other question is, specifically one of the items was storm sewers and non-clean-out of storm sewers. I know all along the southward, along Alcott, along Ogden, along East Highland, they're all clogged, they all flood, they all caused damage to our streets, which then were responsible for fixing. So, again, they're not performing the contract, but you have road damage caused to excess wear and tear, not just from vehicles, but from flooding and the, and all of the attended damage that causes. So, it's a problem. So, I just want to, again, bring that to the council's attention and strongly say we need to, to watch the money. One of the things I, I wasn't quite understanding about the need for the rate increase in terms of making it, and I forgot the exact term, but, but a self-funding utility, was that if, if we're going to, if we haven't raised our rates in a long time, I understand that we may, we may be under, we may be underfunded going forward to cause, but what wasn't clear to me was, would that rate increase include those capital improvements? Or was that just to be self-funding for going forward for our liabilities under the contract for the services provided and the add-ons for, for maintenance projected that aren't part of our contract but that we pay united? And that's it.
Mr. Matt, have you been a part of the conversations?
Yes.
So, the rate increase includes the capital improvements?
That is correct. That would allow for whatever additional debt service, it would cover the total required costs to upgrade the capital facilities.
Mr. Matt, can we also, is this a document that we can put on the website?
We certainly can.
Okay. And Mr. Smith?
Well, before I say that, I think I should speak to our law department.
Okay, well, can you have discussion, and in as much as, if anything else could be adapted, can you do so and then put, what can be up there based on the negotiation? But Mr. Attorney Smith, Alcott Street, the legislation in terms of the permit parking is probably a year old now. And Mr. Josh, you have gotten three tickets?
Three tickets.
Three tickets to date, which is probably resulting in him missing work, having to deal with it. So, can we have a discussion with Mr. Mays and whether it's Captain Dunn, Mr. Mays and the Department of C Y, this is keep reoccurring?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay.
Tomorrow, yeah.
Okay, all right. I mean, Josh, because Mr. Mays knows the legislation, so you and Captain Dunn, we can get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Stewart, some food for thought, come on.
Yes. You took the words from her.
Gloria Stewart, resident of Orange, and I would like to begin with food for thought for chairperson this week.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm in hope that you will think about micromanaging our public comments. We only have 10 minutes to address you. Might be seven for one, and whatever it makes, 10, three for the other. So, I'm asking you, as food for thought, if you can reconsider the micromanaging.
You're talking in five and...
Right. Because mine, I like, you know, I come and I give my concern, might not be the way, you know, five here and five there. Food for thought, because when I look at it, we talk about fixed income, and I use that as an example. We only have 10 minutes fixed time, but when we sit and we listen to constant comments, you could go on and on. And as I look at the clock, you might have to extend your meeting. And I don't think it was our extent, you know what I mean, time. So, this is, again, food for thought, if you would just think about it. Now, to move on, I'd like...
Let me just respond. No, 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 no.
What did you tell me before?
But just give me a second.
Okay.
I'm just remind you that when you had to sit here, I almost gave you a half an hour, so trust me, I'm very fair of when it needs to be cut to a time, but the agenda does say five-minute agenda items, five-minute general comments.
Okay.
So, when I feel necessary to keep it in time...
Okay, but I'm not saying anything about the 10 minutes. I respect that, and if you notice, I stopped with the 10 minutes unless, you know, you're generous enough to give me a couple of more. But I'm saying, if you're just, for 10 minutes, now, because I might not even know whether this agenda or just my personal, it's all overlap. Now, I'd like to know the status of your TV, whatever, reporter, because I was hearing citizens saying, well, we're not, I don't see the council meetings and yada, yada, yada. Is that being televised? Set the television?
It's being televised, not recorded, so...
Okay, so they can actually see it?
Tonight, it won't be replayed.
All right. So, but you can work on, say, the person might be at work and can't see it, so they should be able to play back, because, you know, we can do that on regular TV. Now, if you miss a movie, you can go back. Food for thought. Now, I just want to go on to United Water. Water, it has been one of my concerns for a long time. Remember when East Orange had it? And I always pleaded, take your water back. If you can do it on your own, do it. The best thing is to have your own resources. Now, the report that was given, I am, you know, like, I don't drink the water, I buy my water, I use it to, you know, to wash and everything, but I truly believe that they're not doing a good job. And if the report is true, then maybe, you know, we can get other bids, because I know when we want change, you get the lowest responsible bidder. And if they're doing this to us, we do really need to go out. Don't let them pull you over and bully you to accept them for maybe one year, two years. Find another source, or like it was said before, the speaker before me, make them pay for what they didn't give you already. So, that's just food for thought. Now, the, and I don't know if this agenda, maybe I can attach it. The library situation, is it possible to get an update? Because it's truly needed. And even though, you know, you have modern technology that go to school, but it's nothing like a beautiful public library. So, if it's anything that needs to be, you know, shared with us, would you please do that? I want to also say, one of the things that I say to our mayor, I saw he was here, but he left, but I'm hoping he sees this and feel that it's not robbery for him to be sitting there, as it says, Dewayne Warren. I've always said that, going back, all the way back to Bob Brown, bless his soul, you need to be there if we voted you to be here. So, any concerns or questions, then, you know, you could, might just want to respond if it's just to give us a response. So, I'm asking that he sits there and not leave that seat empty. Now, to get to the VA. Now, I see Mr. Mapp. Now, I thought he was the financial officer, now he's the VA, and then he's also your purchasing, purchasing agent, am I right?
Yes.
So, those are three positions. Now, I don't know if it's a bit much for one individual. And then the other concern, and this is not to be critical, Mr. Mapp, and I know we try to rise to highest goals, and I'm understanding that you're also the mayor in another city. So, my concern is, as a conflict, could it be? And then, are you looking for, and how long would it be for us to get that to work out, to be worked out? Now, going back to your financial agent officer, who was Mr. Mapp? Who is that person now?
Are you saying the CFO?
Yeah, yeah.
Who? Mr. Scarry, Jola Scarry?
Okay, now, going back to the training... Okay, now, going back to the training and paying for that. Has he been... That's something separate. Do you know where to go to school and get trained for that?
Just continuing education.
Oh, that's good. So, what did you do after you trained him so that he doesn't leave him, go someplace else after you paid for his training? So, that's just food for thought again. We really need to look into that. I want to go... Just one, Ms. Stewart, just so I don't forget this. Mr. Matt is still the finance director and acting VA. Well, that's what I just said. I asked for clarification. He has three positions. And he's also mayor.
No, she was talking about the continuing education.
No, no, no. She said CFO. She was asking about Mr. Matt. Oh, okay, okay, now... She was asking about Mr. Matt. Right, so, right, so we're going to... Okay, I got to keep going. Now, we talked about, and I'm trying to touch base with the agenda.
You've been all in it.
The housing authority, right? Now, I sat and I looked and I wanted to just scream, because they were talking about my neighborhood. I live right down the street, almost 40 years. And, you know, when you sit up there and you talk about imminent domain, you talk about the conditions and all of that, it really hurt me, even though I know what he's saying possibly is the truth. But it didn't make me feel too good being so close to the situation. So, when, you know, I wanted them to be here so that, you know, I can ask them some questions, but I wouldn't have worked because we didn't have the time. But I'm going to try to take that offer up and when they're going to give their next one, on the 9th or something like that?
Or Councilman Abdul Rashid is liaison, so perhaps he can...
But the other thing is, I do have to agree with the appearance of this. You know that's right down the street from me, right? And I'm looking at this, and I look at the one on Perot Street, you know, like when I come down Perot Street, the freeway drive, they look pretty good, okay? But when I look at this, I was actually thinking that those, these were going to be like those on Perot Street consistently, you know, it's the same group of people, right? So, why would you make this one look a little different? And if you look at this, the window structure, and I'm trying in my mind to figure out what it reminds me of. Nothing that's really good. So, I want to...
I was counting on you, Ms. Stewart.
So, I'm really hoping, I'm really hoping that they can rethink this, you know. I wouldn't even mind seeing them like the ones on Perot Street. Like I was saying, that's what I actually thought they were going to be like. And the other thing, you know, I'm listening at the young man that was talking about imminent domain and, you know, you got to wait for people to sort of actually lose what little they have and then they go in and take over.
No, no, actually, with Bronco, what Mrs. Scotland says, they concentrated on the vacant and properties that resulted. Some of them resulted in several fires, which caused them to have the conversation. We had several fires.
But bottom line is the same thing. They come in and they take it. And then I think the question was raised, will those people be able to come back? Some of the ones that, you know, had to leave for whatever reason?
No, they did. A lot of people walked away from properties.
Yeah.
And they've been for a period of time without. And we have abandoned property lists as well.
Okay, now, quickly, now, in terms of the school. Now, I noticed they're buying up some properties too, right? So, are they getting intertwined or whatever? You know, they bought a couple of properties, the school, the Board of Education, right? And then he's saying they're buying up properties. So, I'm trying to figure out how that's going to work. Now, when I talk about the school and they're building supposedly these nice places to live, you look at the school, which was redone, but then you also have those trailers that look horrible. You have those four trailers. Not only do they look horrible, but I think I pointed out to the mayor, a few other people, there's an element of danger. My grandson goes to one via hazard. If it was a fire on one of those, how would those students get out? The other thing is, and I've also, when you pass by those of you who may drive down Oakwood, I know you don't necessarily have to, it's out of your way. But if you look at the fence in the back of the trailers, there's debris all built up. Now, my thing is the housing authorities over here asking for the right to build. Now, do I have to go and talk to the Board of Education about cleaning that up? Then I go to the city and they want their passing the buck. Who's going to clean that up, that trash? It looks awful.
Let me get some of your questions answered. And I want to bring Director Mays up last on that question about that debris, because they are, the school, the housing authority and the Board of Education, the housing authority have all been talking about with Mr. Mays.
But it's about kids, it shouldn't matter?
I said they're talking about it. I don't think it does.
Shouldn't be in the talk.
So, I'm going to bring him up to give you an answer.
All right.
Director Matt, the status of the recording of Channel 35 is replaying. Any update?
No update at this time.
Okay. Can we have an update prepared for 9/17, December 17?
An update on the status of Channel 35.
Yes. Councilman Maribel, any updates with the library?
Are you asking me when the library is going to open?
No, I said, do you have any updates?
That's the only update I'm interested in, and no, I don't have one.
Okay, thank you. Director Dow, the question in terms of Oakwood Avenue School, a fire drill for the trailers, has that been unknown? Have they done a fire drill for the trailers?
Any of the trailers that are being used by the Board of Education complies with the fire code. They do have alarm systems and any fire drills, they have to be complied with. And when we do the school inspections, we inspect those buildings. So, even though they look like, they're semi-permanent structures.
Would you check that again, because I don't think that's... So, I'm not... When you go and check the code, please.
Okay.
Because I don't think that's...
Before I bring Director Mays up, Councilwoman Gordon Butler?
I had a question for Director Dow.
Regarding?
Regarding the trailers that Ms. Stewart is referring to. Do they have more than one means of ingress and egress?
I'd have to check, but they would meet the present school, they couldn't use them. They come out of the fire code and they're used to expand the building, but they have alarm systems in them and they have to meet the exit requirements and any fire code. But we'll double-check them and get back to you on the next meeting.
If a fire starts on the front, they have a safe building there. Should it start on the front?
Ms. Stewart.
No, how about if the fire... I don't want to talk this up. But if a fire starts on the front?
Let me get your questions answered. Let him do the...
Okay.
Then he'll get back.
As well, the councilwoman, Ms. Stewart. I'll have the Fire Prevention Bureau, we look at the Board of Education's policy with trailers, then we'll look at the files, and then on the next council meeting, I'll give you a report on that.
Thank you. Director Mays?
This isn't on that.
No, but we have been having a conversation about this debris. So, and he's kind of the focal point of getting... The conversation with the debris behind Oakwood Avenue between the fence, we have any updates with that?
Last, Director Mays, planning and public works. I did, somebody actually, for a couple of weeks, I wasn't sure what, because a couple of different people mentioned it. Finally got a picture. I don't know if you took the picture, Ms. Stewart. Somebody sent the picture and we all looked and said, this is what. Finally, we found out that was last week. It should have been cleaned up. I had to dispatch one of my code enforcement personnel to go speak directly with the school, but I don't know if it's been cleaned.
They say it's the housing authorities.
No, no, that's...
The fence, then the debris, and housing authorities.
Ms. Stewart, there's...
We got past that. It's not the housing authorities, it's the school. I can tell you that much from a week ago, but I don't know if it's been cleaned up.
I don't know, I don't know.
I'll check it tomorrow, but it should have been cleaned up by now.
It wasn't today.
No.
Will you come back on December 17 to finish? Because I've actually...
You have.
I've given you actually...
You have. And just the recreation, the piece that was asked with the housing authority, they need to focus on that. He touched on it today.
The community center?
The night, the community center, but he sort of left it...
No, it's there, it's a part of the plan.
Okay, but he still left it in the sky. You know, the clouds, the thing you talk about with technology.
Well, let me just say, in closing, no, let me just say, in closing, Ms. Stewart, that is an ongoing conversation and it's not in concrete, because it is a community center and it's... Needs to me, the needs of the people that live there, the people who live in the community and the Board of Education. So, it's an ongoing conversation. That's what he left on.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
It looks like Mr. Meyer left. Ms. Gordon, Kate McGordon. And before Ms. Gordon comes to the mic, I have a motion to extend?
Move.
Move by Councilwoman Jones Bell?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Corbett. All in favor?
Aye.
In favor of what?
All in favor of extending the meeting.
Can we get a separate vote? I want to go on the record.
Vote called Councilman Abdul Rashid.
Not in favor.
Councilman Corbett.
No.
Councilwoman Eason.
Yes.
Councilwoman Maribel.
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones Bell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gordon Butler.
No.
Councilwoman Williams, yes.
Yes, I made it. Four ayes, three nays.
Thank you. Sorry, Ms. Warren, Kate McGordon?
No problem. Good evening, Kathleen Gordon, Park Place, Orange. There have been several very important issues, especially those two points about the water and the rebuilding. Regardless, the water is vital interest of the city to have good, reliable drinking water. I am really interested in what the process will be that you are going to follow. If you could share with me these introductions to issues come, stir up some wind and then not on the surface anymore. I think this particular one has to be followed all along because it is of enormous importance to the city's future. Having said that, this, as shocking it was to hear that another, I don't know, $4 million has to be bonded to continue the keep-up of the water system, it all builds on the idea that our water amount is secured. I don't think this is the case. I don't know if you have noticed the slip in the last water quality statement that the city released, that there was an insert, "We purchased actually external water last year." Clearly not because we have plenty of it. This water company has not been, beside the facts that it did not follow the prescribed routine that we have been paying for, it has not been straightforward with us on other issues. I remember one or two years ago when I did mention water quality issues, Valerie Jackson, deputy VA, then stood up and said, "There is no ever any problem with our water. Ms. Kemp speaks regularly with the DEP and we would know." Well, not all that much later, it turned out that we had such quality problems with the Gisplis area that it was declared the superfund side. So much, so much for being straightforward and honest. I don't know also, in other words, I would really want to hear that you are following up such questions before deciding on the fees of economic data that we have been provided, that the underlying situation is sound and we are not building an expensive system further, not further building an expensive system of unreliable basis. I don't know if you know that there is a mayor's council of nine municipalities in the Rove River watershed that is investigating with the Army Corps of Engineers how to diminish the flooding in the downstream areas. One of the options is, two of the, one single option and one combined option is taking the area that currently contains the major part of our water supply and transform it to a dry reservoir. That would flood, I don't know, 90 acres in a situation like Irene would be. In a smaller yearly flood situation, it will flood 30 acres, including our water wells in the area. Clearly, that provides a problem about the quality, the future quality of that water. So, I urge you to look very, very closely into these underlying problems. What happened? What is happening to Gisplis? Are we still getting water from Gisplis? I would say, or I would like to know in this evaluation of the water system that shows City of Orange water, current water bills or water price and compares it to a number of others. Why is the City of Ravey, City of Woodbridge, Linden included? Why isn't there an inclusion of our neighbors like West Orange, like Maplewood, like Montclair? How do we, how do our water supply price relates to our neighbors? Completely, completely different situations. If I am not mistaken, Ravey actually cleans its drinking water from the Ravey River. We are happy to be handed down those water wells and the property in the South Mountain Reservation and we should be holding onto it undisturbed. The city should stake a stance, contact, and the city's, contact the Army Corps of Engineers, that we have vital interest here. In other words, there is work waiting for the council in this respect. How much more time do you have?
Your time is up. Your time, you are at, you are at one more minute to go. And you want to, Mr. Matt, to answer your question in terms of several questions you asked about the water report? You just asked a specific one?
I asked, yes, why other, why the closer communities are not involved, not shown, but other communities are further away. And what the council is intending to do in following this important... in following this important issue?
I think one of the questions we asked, that they're still in the process of doing the negotiations, so we're waiting for a response when we finish. But, Mr. Matt, do you know, in one of the towns, they did do East Orange, but did you know why they didn't do West Orange, South Orange? Was there a specific reason why they went to the other cities as opposed to just doing the surrounding towns?
I don't know, but I believe that it's probably because they're more comparable. That's my belief. But we'll have to get the answer from the consultant.
Okay. Can we have their response prepared? We'll have that.
Yes, so, you know, showing, what, two, three, six, seven towns, and, you know, saying that we didn't show the neighborhood because it is comparable is kind of misleading.
Well, let's see the reason behind it, and let's get an answer. We'll have it, Mr. Matt will get an answer, okay?
Yes, so as far as the council's actions on the issues that I'm?
We're not taking any action yet because they're not finished, and we're waiting for?
Finished with what?
The whole reporting and the negotiations. There is no action to take at this point.
The negotiations is regarding the current month-to-month situation?
It's the current negotiations regarding the whole report. They're still in discussions, Ms. Gordon.
No, I understand, but, I mean, I pointed out that there are other issues behind the most obvious ones, not only the financial issues are of importance.
Okay, but there will be another report from the consultant, and at that time, the council will decide what to do. We're not at that point yet.
Please keep the public in the loop. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashley Cartwright, Ashley? Kevin? I'm sorry, Ashley Cartwright. I'm sorry, I didn't pronounce her last name.
Good evening, Council. Ashley Cartwright, Orange, New Jersey. I can't, not right now.
Okay.
I just want to, it's a few things that I have to say and ask. The first thing is regarding 408, 2013. I have a question regarding that to Mr. Matt. I don't know the employee's name, nor is it any of my business. I just want to know, why would they be allowed to collect two salaries under this grant? If they already have employment, why are you giving them another job?
That's a worthy grant, Mr. Matt?
I don't know that any employee will be given another job, but someone has to administer the program. And this individual, who worked in the department that we believe is best suited to do this, is the one that is being chosen.
So, as of right now, based on what you're saying, based on what you're submitting with the application, that employee is also going to benefit from this grant, correct?
No. There are no personal benefits to be derived by any individual. The citizens of Orange will benefit from this grant in terms of it being a grant to service people with disabilities.
I mean, that sounds good. I get what you're saying. But my ultimate question is, all right, to get the grant, it would have to be in the name of an employee that is already being paid a salary, correct?
No. The grant is being applied for by the City of Orange and not by this individual.
No, I?
This individual's salary is mentioned, and obviously, a portion of her salary will be covered by this grant in light of the fact that she will be administering this particular grant.
Well, I only ask that because the unemployment rate is extremely high, and you yourself hold multiple positions. And then, I'm just alarmed that this person will also have multiple positions. I just think that's just, I'm sure there are other people out here in the City of Orange that needs a job.
I think you're misreading and misinterpreting how this will work.
Explain to me.
This grant will be administered by the employee that is listed in the grant. This is not an additional job that this person will have, and this is not a grant. If you look at the grant, you'll see the grant is for, I think, about $24,000. It's for about $24,000 or thereabouts, to provide services to people with disabilities.
Okay, but the employee knows that they're not getting any, another salary?
Well, I will not be discussing the employee any further. I think that I've answered the question the best I can.
I think, Ms. Cartwright, I think Mr. Matt has, what he's going to do is respond, because we're actually going to pull it.
Okay.
I believe Councilwoman Easton, there's going to be a request because Mr. Matt has to respond to some questions. And it cannot be answered at this point. But I think, Mr. Matt, what you're saying is that the grant requires just tonight, who the reporting person is, it has nothing to do with additional salaries? Is that what?
The grant application, as I saw it, shows an employee who will administer the grant. It shows that employee's salary. And in the grant application, it shows an amount that will be, that will go towards salaries.
Councilwoman Easton, point of order.
I would venture to say Mr. Matt doesn't know what it says. Let's just move on. We ask for?
No, let me, let me. We ask for an explanation. Okay, but Councilwoman Easton, but I want Ms. Cartwright to walk away.
You can be disrespectful. You choose to be casual.
She will be at the next meeting when he explains.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I'll be here. Oh, no problem. Okay. All right. Another thing was, on the morning of November 27, I woke up to find that my license plate, my temporary license plates were stolen. And so, since then, I've been, like, really looking outside, making sure my car isn't stolen or anything like that. My question is, what are we doing about the crime rate? Because we all say crime is getting bad. A few people came up. Last council meeting, someone said she was robbed or mugged outside of her own house. There's always warning before destruction, and Orange is a small city, and I'm afraid that all these little nibbits here and there is going to lead to a major disaster. So what are we doing about the police patrol and the crime rate in its entirety?
Captain Dunn? Captain Dunn, like, that's a big question. I love to see that he got up. And invite to the Thursday meeting as well, because that's a good forum to discuss solutions. Okay. You have to go to the mic, Captain Dunn.
Yes. Like most police departments, we take very many preventative tasks to try to keep crime rate down in the City of Orange. You know, we do many things. I mean, this could be a very long, long, long answer, but, you know, a lot of crimes are random. And of course, everybody knows the police can't be everywhere all the time. So, you know, you're going to have some degree of incidents that do occur. But we are taking measures to try to. We are a small city.
Captain Dunn, can you just elevate your voice?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we're only 2.2 square miles, but our crime rate is not that, not that bad.
I know, though, I know Ms. Cart?
Yeah, it's a very broad question, you know.
I know, because based on what I, my complaint and other people's complaints tonight was the police patrol. I don't see them as often as I used to. And I'm not being facetious or any, I don't see police as often as I used to. If I see them, they're either doing construction, stop to help construction on Main Street by the post office, or somewhere in their car. But I don't see the police patrol like I used to. I spoke to you last council meeting regarding speeding through the neighborhood about the police and?
This was, you don't have to address the chair. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But, no, I, I don't, I'm scared. My card, I'm so, so. Lincoln Avenue, Lincoln Avenue.
She doesn't, but she, if she didn't feel comfortable, she's, there's a fear. She's noted a fear on it. So don't make her, but she's scared. And we have to acknowledge her fear.
Yeah, only because?
And she can talk to Captain Dunn offline. But Captain Dunn, do we know when the next PCC meeting is?
I don't know that off the top of my head, no.
They just had one, Ms. Cart, can I? I hear that you've talked to Captain Dunn. It's a continuing conversation. It's a work, and I believe he's going to have a very big report to take back to Director Sims because he's had overall concerns, many, tonight. If you would, Captain Dunn, get Ms. Cartwright's number?
Yes, we have.
Okay, and then if you can just kind of talk and have a conversation, and then we can follow up on the 21st, and Director Sims will be back, and then we can have some plans. And I don't know, have you ever been to the PCC meeting?
I have not.
Okay, and we can, when the next one? Do you know, Councilman Corbett?
I don't know. I think they just had one recently.
And let me just?
Yep, November 21.
They had one November 21?
I was at that meeting, and at that time, they were finalizing their schedule. So the best thing to do is call Lieutenant Soto, who I'm sure Captain Dunn will give you his number. He oversees that. And hopefully, they'll have one in December with the tentative that date has not been released.
And, Mr., let me just, and we have liaisons on the council. And liaison for the police is Councilman Corbett, who has a card at Councilwoman Jones-Bell. And I will encourage him. We have, there are certain escalations that citizens who utilize the council very well take. They will email Councilman Corbett, and as they get, if this problem hasn't been dealt with, they will email everybody and believe us, and then it works. So take the card, and then let's just get some responses, and we'll get back to you. I apologize for what happened to your property. Okay. A motion to close citizens' comments?
Move.
Moved by Councilwoman Jones-Bell, second by Councilwoman Garth Butler. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Council comments? Councilman Abdul Rashid?
Pass.
Councilman Maribel?
I thought you called Councilman Abdul Rashid.
He said he passed, so.
Okay.
Would you like to pass as well?
No, I never pass.
Okay.
We often talk about the distress cities are under and the state of, you know, the economy and the like. It's not really discussed that much. Churches kind of fall in the same category, or other places of worship, because they're significantly reliant upon the equivalent of taxes, donations, to keep the doors open, keep the heat and lights on, and those type of things. And churches tend to be very resilient in that regard because they feel they have to be open, they have to exist. I am not trying to preempt Mr. Matt's promise to provide some update as to Channel 35 at all. But I am just suggesting that if you go to most churches on a Sunday, within 10 or 15 minutes after the service is over, they are selling DVDs of that sermon. They record them, as we do here. They copy them, as we don't do here, and then they mass-produce them like that for sale. And one of the reasons they do that is because it's a terrific income generator. It's amazing how the motivation of income can cause you to do things that you wouldn't otherwise do. I'm saying all that to say that this notion, and again, I'm not preempting Mr. Matt's report or whoever will offer the report, but I'm not saying anything new. It has been said several times here tonight, this notion that, you know, we're not recording these meetings, we're not re-airing these meetings. I've said it before, I can go to Costco and get the equipment for less than $100 to record this meeting and burn a DVD. My 13-year-old son can do it. Most kids can do it. Usually, the younger they are, the quicker he can do it. How we need a report? It's fine with me to give a report, but I'm not going to be happy with any report that suggests we don't have the technological wherewithal to do it. I just know better. And although this is not in church, people shouldn't be lying about it. Before he left, Joshua Sokowski was kind enough to send me a link to the National League of Cities website. And I urge everyone to look at it. It is actually very informative. There were several things said tonight about the bill for annual dues, that it may have been retroactive billing in part. The website is quite specific, giving the number of residents and how that translates into an annual membership fee. One resident over 30,000 comes with a fee of $32.58, which I believe is the exact amount on the bill list tonight. If we had two fewer people, $29,999, it would reduce significantly to $1,861. So that cutoff really saves you a lot of money. I was very interested in the City of Newark, and I kind of made a joke about it earlier, that Newark might be six figures. Newark has over 300,000 people. They're paying over $16,000 as an annual fee. I have to say, without knowing more about the good that the National League of Cities does, that it sounds like highway robbery to me. That we're paying $3,258 to just have membership does not seem to be money well-spent, from my perspective. It does not appear that that's more than one year, and I think the deputy clerk had suggested that, that it was for just the one year. I want to be clear. But it just seems, I don't know what the bang for the buck is with that. And again, it may be for the entire city. I have, for over a year now, been suggesting to people that Orange actually has fewer than 30,000 residents. I think our population is on the decline. As of 2010 census, we have just over 30,100 and something people. And the estimate for 2012 on the census website is actually a little higher. I think that's inaccurate. I think we have fewer than 30,000 people. If nothing else, I think the argument could be made to the National League of Cities that we should fall into that $29,999 category. It would save us $1,400 at best, but at worst, we should not be paying $32.58 for membership in any organization. I've just never heard of anything like that. I'm surprised the City of Newark, well, maybe I shouldn't, maybe they're not a member. I will inquire this week as to whether they are, but it just seems rather exorbitant to me. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilman Corbett?
First, I just want to thank the administration for the tree lighting ceremony tonight. It certainly was a worthy event in terms of getting people into the Christmas holiday. With all the bah humbug that surrounds the City of Orange, we certainly need something to lift our spirits, and that certainly did lift mine. I was glad I was able to attend. Maybe about three months ago, this council asked the administration to provide a listing of employees who have rights to a vehicle. Do you recall that, Mr. Matt?
Yes, I do.
Do you know the council is still waiting for that list?
You may very well be still waiting for the list.
Is there a reason for that?
The information is still being gathered. I will follow up with Mr. Mays.
Read my mind. Three months? You're still gathering information?
We don't have the information. It's information that has to be assembled.
Mr. Mays, can you address that, please?
That's a long time. Marty Mays, Director of Planning and DPW. I think I had said this a couple of council meetings ago, that I did meet separately with the fire department, have their information. I met with the police department. I had to wait two weeks because Polito was on vacation. I have all the information from police, fire, and what Public Works. So I'm currently in the process of compiling that. The only other piece of the puzzle is, there was an employee that was here that was, I was told today, that was working on compiling all that information as well. And I reached out to the mayor's office, and I'm waiting to see what information they have. So it should be a short time, maybe my next council meeting or the one after that. And I should have everything that I need.
That will be four months, almost a half a year. And I think the city is better equipped than that to be able to provide information. It's very simple information. We're not asking anyone to re-event the wheel.
Well, the only thing is, you have to take into consideration that police did their own thing with their vehicles. Fire did their own thing with theirs, and Public Works. So it was, it's more than just the information is, So, it was, it's more than just the information, is, you know, they watched over getting tires, getting them fixed, getting them, so it really is not a pure, or wasn't a pure Public Works function. It never was, and now that's what it's turning into. Well, that's what I hear the council saying. And that's what I'm working towards. But it's, you're right, it's not ready. I don't have to meet with anybody, don't have to wait for anybody, so that information will be forthcoming, under one umbrella, Public Works.
Well, for the eye that's looking upon and not within, it just certainly appears to us that no one really seems to care what the council asks for. Doesn't matter if we get it or not. If I did something like that in a place of business, that's insubordination. And my head would be rolling. I'd be in big trouble. And for the council to accept that coming from the administration, people who have access to this record, those records and that information, is really just unacceptable. And I think the council really needs to look at ways to, I guess, reward people for being insubordinate. And we need to be serious about that. That has to stop, you know, it's just uncalled for. So, Mr. Mays, if you will, if you'd be so kind, I know you have a lot on your plate, but I just think it requires some man-hours to just get this done. And please, if you can, have it to us on December 18th, that's our next one.
I think, I'm sorry to interrupt Councilman Corbett. Director Mays, the problem when we initially asked for the task, there were, you were supposed to contact Councilman Maribel because, and I don't know if you have kept in contact with-
I didn't talk to her.
Okay, so that would be, to me, something to be considered, that, keeping Councilman Maribel in the loop, because it was going to, once he got the list, we were all going to get the list, but it was also going to start us in writing a legislation on it going forward.
Right.
So, please, even if it's, you know, some email going forward as to the status.
Okay.
One other question for you, Mr. Mays, before you sit down. It's been a year since Superstorm Sandy came roaring through. And at that time, we had several tiles from our ceiling down, and there still seems to be one that's missing. When can we get that one?
Yeah, I know that we are looking into that there. We found, we couldn't find them because, I don't know if it's because they're older tiles or what they are, but we did receive a book, I know, a couple of weeks ago with the exact tile. I don't know where we are, I will look into that. It was hard to try to match them and find them. The ones that we did replace, they had to be cut, but we did find this exact one, so I'll look into that as well.
Would you please? Because, you know, this is how our city goes to pot. It starts with one little piece, it gets neglected and everything, and before you know it, it spreads and then the whole place looks bad. So, let's try to nip that in the bud before this gets ridiculous. Thank you very much, Council President.
That's it?
That's it.
Councilwoman Jones Bell?
Thank you, Council President. I don't want to belabor this issue, but I am not a fan of United Water, have never been, and will not be voting for them to get another contract with the city of Orange. The water is disgusting. There's constantly an overflow of water at Park Place and Park Avenue, whenever it rains, just an inch rain. And I have to walk like a quarter way up the block to go around the puddles. And near Thomas Boulevard, the same thing. And the water is just disgusting. And if we're going to pay for a service, why can't they at least give us water that we can drink? It's also horrible on your skin. And we can barely get council meetings shown consistently. I know Josh asked for a PDF online of United Water's operating, operating plan agreement with the city of Orange. I don't know how that's going to happen. We can barely get online council meetings. There's a mural project that's going on, that was started by Valley Arts and Oakwood Avenue, I think, Ms. Stewart, this is for you. Oakwood Avenue School was chosen to be the first one to receive, you know, because your daughter was at one of our meetings. The mural is supposed to be, to make the trailers more appealing. I know that has nothing to do with safety, but this was just an aesthetic, you know, somebody decided, well, let's at least make it appealing while they have to be there, be housed there. So, and there's a building across the street that's also going to be done. But that's just food for thought. The young lady that was just up here.
Ms. Cartwright?
Ms. Cartwright?
Yes.
Okay. We can talk, I want to give you my card at the end, if you're going to be here at the end, if not, before you leave. Because, I mean, we're understaffed. The police are, they're doing what they can do with what they have, but they're understaffed, you know, and it's kind of hard not to make any excuses, trust me. If somebody needs a police car, I'm going to call and expect to get a car too, for whatever the reason is. Doesn't have to always be an emergency, but you know, you know, you have to wait, priorities take place first, but we'll talk, okay? Don't give up hope. Keep hope alive. And that's all I really want to say. Thank you.
Councilwoman Neeson?
Yes, Ms. Johnson?
Jessie Jackson.
Jessie Jackson. Come on, wake up.
Real quickly, I just want to say, a couple of our residents came up and talked about police and response time. One of the things I think the council, as well as the residents, we know we need, bottom line, we need more police officers.
We do.
We've got to have more police officers. And right now, all of them are a little nervous because somebody put out that they were going to get laid off.
Ah, boy.
So, they're really shaking. So, I think that's totally unfair. And I just was sitting here reading an article from 2011 about a community discussion at St. Matthew's Church about the same issue of layoffs. And we were told that this administration were doing it to everything humanly possible not to go that route again. I mean, the residents can help us advocate because we can talk all night, they can give their cards to whatever councilperson, whatever liaison, the bottom line is, in order to change the response time, we need more police officers. Bottom line.
Yep.
So, we can't promise something we can't deliver. They're doing the best they can with what they have. So, if they don't get there on time, you need to be ringing the mayor's phone saying, we need more police officers. So, you can help us do that. Because we all pay taxes, you pay taxes, you should have the service and you should have the protection. So, that's an advocate, and we, and as councilpeople, we need to start seeing that over and over again, which I've always do. Where are we going to get more officers, and we need to do that. And this question's for Mr. Map. Mr. Map, has the bill been sent to Director McNeil so we can get the money for the pilot?
Excuse me?
He wasn't at the last meeting, was he?
What bill are you talking about?
Has Walter G. been billed?
Has the bill been submitted? We are in a budget crunch. You all have, always have time to write a layoff plan to send to Trenton. But you don't have the time to put a bill together for us to get money from the Walter G. down to pilot. So, my question is, has the bills been submitted so that we can get paid in this budget year?
We do bill people, companies that we have pilot agreements with.
Mr. Map, that's, I'm sorry, that is not my question. I only want one question.
I will not sit here-
I'm not Judge Judy.
I will not sit here and attempt to answer your question.
Has the bill been sent to Walter G. so we can get the money in this year's budget?
I will let you know if Walter G. and who else were billed so far. I'll let you know that after the night.
Let me just, Director Map, let me be clear. We understand that the bill did not go out because there was, it was a new pilot and there were certain things being, I think the audit report, and the audit report has been received. So, the question is specifically not about, I mean, well, it'd be helpful to all the pilots, but has Walter G. been billed yet? And if you don't have it, can you get it to us ASAP?
I will check, and I will get back to you through the clerk's office.
Councilwoman Neeson tells it?
We need that money in this year's budget. We're trying to avert the layoffs. And we need to go after every dollar that we have out there to make sure that we have the budget dollars to keep our police and fire. They didn't overrun their budgets, so they can't be penalized. We need to make sure that the money that's owed us, that we do get. And going back to the city cars, Mr. Mays, can you tell us why there's a secretary with a city car? No, I don't think I want you to answer that. I don't want you to answer that. One of the things I want to say is, no, you don't need to answer that. I know the answer. But the thing about it is, when you don't provide the data that we request, it looks like you have something to hide. So, if you provide us the data, then we would have the answer to all of those questions. Because right now, the residents are watching, and they're seeing everybody, their brother driving a city vehicle, burning the gas, their taxpayers' dollars are paying for. So, we need an answer. And then you can find out the question that I just asked, why a secretary has a city car? And I think you need to report back to the council at the next, next council meeting. And I too want to say that the Christmas tree lighting was great tonight, it did give me some Christmas spirit. I'm beginning to feel like bah humbug with this budget and everything, and everybody being all nervous about thinking they're going to get laid. It's Christmas time.
Beginning.
We don't need anybody to be depressed. We know everybody enjoyed their holidays. And I don't know why, every time we look, we're looking at our employees, and they're all upset because somebody chose to start some hysteria in a holiday. I mean, we have to do better than that. We did not overrun our budget. So, I don't know why everybody is running around saying, oh, we need to lay off. There's no need for a layoff, Mr. Map. So, we need to take that into consideration because if the finance department does its job and get the money that's owed us, we would not be in this situation. Thank you.
Councilwoman Garth Butler?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I'll just have brief remarks. I just wanted to mention that I happened to spend most, or a good portion of my Thanksgiving Day at the fire department. And actually, it was a wonderful celebration. I'm sure firefighter Jamie Anderson, Captain Jamie Anderson, mentioned it. But I just wanted to say that it was quintessential Orange, community helping community, and I think we need to do more of it. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilman Abdul Rashid?
First, I would like to thank the administration. Mr. Map and Mr. Mays, I had asked you about the city flags at several locations. I'm glad you put some of those up and you've ordered some others. I also would like to, I had sent you an email about three weeks ago regarding the Catch Basin at the southwest corner of Lincoln Avenue and Central. And Marty Mays, they gave me a call today indicating that they had started working on that. I want to thank you for that, Mr. Mays. Also, I may have said this, but at the risk of being redundant and/or remiss, I would like to thank the Public Works Department for straightening up and cleaning up the council conference room to some degree. It looks much better than it did. But also, about three weeks ago, maybe three and a half, Mr. Map, I had a conversation with you regarding the telephone service, which I did make a comment at the last city council meeting, that if we just can't, if citizens or council members or out-of-town folks can't call the city hall or leave a message, then we're all in trouble. But actually, I called Sandy Mason yesterday morning, and actually, I got a voicemail. So, I'm assuming that it's all up if that's up. And so, that's how I found out. And I know you did call the Keisha Knight in your office and told her to expend some money to get that going. Hopefully, it'll stay up for a longer period of time, if not indefinitely. Also, just want to say, certainly to the fire department, Jamie, and all of the people that he spoke of at the fire department Thanksgiving Day. But I just want to thank the volunteers who are nameless. There was a lot of young folks there, there was an older gentleman, his name escapes me, that the captain told me that he rides around and pick up senior citizens and literally brings them to the event. I forgot his name, but I'm sure some folks out there know who I'm talking about. And so, I just want to thank all of the nameless volunteers who helped with that, and all of the young folks, and the family members. With respect to Central Avenue, Mr. Mays, that's going up so fast, it looks like if you put a camera there on an iPod, tripod, you can do a time lapse. You know how you see that on the news? I mean, I don't, I mean, there ripping is an understatement, so I want to thank you for that. And I'm quite frankly, and personally, and professionally, and as a public servant, glad that you are the director of Public Works and the Department of Economic Development and Planning. To you, Mr. Mays, with respect to that, please don't forget the garbage cans on Lincoln Ave. You don't have to, you don't have to get up, I want to expedite that. Could you, could you remember to put the garbage cans up at Central Avenue and, Central Avenue and Lincoln Avenue on the, on the north side of, I'm sorry, the south side of Central Avenue, between the Bodega and Romeo's Pizza? You said that you had those cans in stock. And also, you know, I went out to, with the engineer on November the 11th, and we did an assessment that I believe that we need a traffic light at Frankfurt Street and Scotland Road. There's no traffic light on Main Street. The only traffic light is from Main Street and Scotland Road to Central Avenue and Scotland Road. And between those two points, it's basically a drag race. You don't even have to live in Orange to know that. And so, he did an assessment, he forwarded his report to you. It may cost the city approximately 13 to $2,000, Mr. Map, but I hope you guys could take a look at that. In addition to, we also did an assessment at Lincoln Avenue and Frankfurt Street, and he forwarded you the legislation for the three-way stop sign. I would hope that you would have that on the agenda at the December 17 city council meeting. And I also asked if they could put some pedestrian lines at that intersection. And so, hopefully, you know, that legislation will pass. To you, Mr. Map, at the last city council meeting, I believe Mr. Mays was sitting there. I don't know if he mentioned to you, and if he didn't, that's fine. If he did, that's even better. I had asked him if the administration would consider, because perhaps you've heard, several folks have come here publicly, and some to me privately, I won't speak for anybody else as I make sure I don't, saying that they didn't know the library was literally closed, or they found out very late, et cetera, or they found out because they walked there. And I was just wondering, do you think it's appropriate at this time, even though it's six or seven months past after the fact, that the Orange Library could still give a, just a general brief presentation to the community, letting them know why it was closed from their perspective? And I realize you're not on the, on the library board, I do, I do understand that. Could they give a public presentation as to why it's closed, where they're at with it, and perhaps answer any questions that the public deem appropriate? You know, I just wanted you to carry that back to the administration and to the Orange Acting Library Board President, Tashami Cooper. And perhaps you could just give me a response to that. Also, would it be a fair statement to say that if you and/or the mayor told the deputy directors that they must submit their availability for budget hearings in January, I'm sorry, get back to you with that, those dates in January, to have that, their commitment or their availability for definitive budget hearings in February or March? You or the mayor could make that happen. I mean, you could, you could probably go in the hallway and give that call out right now if you, if you really wanted to. So, what I'm saying to you is, would you have a problem asking the directors, or would you reach out to the mayor after you consult to him, mayor, I beg your pardon, and ask him if he could have his directors come up with a definitive availability schedule when they would be available to have budget hearings in February 2014 and/or no later than March 2014? And coming upon the fact that we may have one or two to wrap up some statutory documents relative thereof? I mean, would that, would you see that being possibly doable at this point in time?
Well, first of all, the administration will determine who will attend budget hearings, number one. Number two, the administration will be available for budget hearings depending on the status of the approval of the budget. Whether that's February, whether that's March, the budget is statutorily- The budget is statutorily due by February 10th. However, there are circumstances, sometimes the division extends that date. But the administration will certainly do everything in its power to be cooperative and to make sure that the staff that is germane to the budget process is present.
And just so we're clear, and I don't want to go back and forth with you, certainly, the only thing I've ever learned is that the mayor will determine who's going to be at the budget hearings. And so, that's why I said in my statements that you would consult with him. But hypothetically, there, you know, if you and/or the mayor wanted to tell the directors to have their availability ready in January for budget hearings in February and/or March, independent of everything you said, with all due respect, you and/or the mayor, certainly, if not you, the mayor could make that happen. I mean, that's, that's a fair statement.
Of course.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay. Could you tell me why all of the directors don't consistently be at the city council meetings? One in particular would be the Deputy Director of Community Affairs, and, I'm sorry, the Director of Community Affairs, Ms. Sykes.
Councilwoman Abdul Rashid, is there something you can wait until Friday? Because that is a part of attorney, that's a part of the questions that Attorney Smith has to respond to us on Friday. We gave him a list of questions, and that's one of them.
You know, at the interest of my age and my disabilities, I yield to that.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Mr. Mays, I asked you at a couple of city council meetings, I'm sorry, through you, Council President, to Dan Smith, I asked you at a couple of city council meetings ago, could you give me a legal opinion, even if it's just two sentences, as to why employees cannot be named on the bill list when they're doing professional training or whatever they may be doing? And you said, "Well, you'll talk to me in private, or we'll have an offline conversation," which we never had, and you do return my phone calls, sometime you're in, sometime you're out. But I'm saying, independent of that conversation, which quite frankly, I don't feel we need to have, can you just give me a legal opinion as to why? Because you remember Ms. Cooper said, "The names are omitted because they feel harassed," or people would be saying, "Why are you spending taxpayers' money?" And I said, "Well, since taxpayers are spending the money, they have a right to know who." And I'm not saying that the training isn't appropriate or would help the city. I'm just saying, you know, Ms. Cooper said that's why. She deferred to you, but can you just give me a legal opinion? I don't feel we need to have a conversation, because I would only say what I'm saying now.
If you'd be so kind, I'll submit that with other questions I have to respond to you on Friday? If that's okay?
That's, that's fine. Through you, Council President, to Mr. Map, obviously, and I, I'm not privy to it, but I'm going to go out on a limb here and say, obviously, there was a layoff plan submitted to Trenton on November the 7th.
Abdul Rashid, I don't want to be redundant, but that is a part of the questions. I mean, if you recall the questions, if we can just keep Friday's questions for Friday to give the administration and attorney and the law off of the time to respond to them, if, you know.
This is my last question, this is my last of two questions. Through you two men, again, because of my age and my disabilities, I'm going to yield to that. Through you, Council President, to Mr., to Mr. Map, with respect to the water presentation that was made and all of the comments and discussions relative thereof, we didn't have a performance clause in there that quite frankly said, "If they didn't do all their diligence and duties, that we wouldn't have to pay them, or they would owe us some monies." I mean, there was no clause. It sounds to me that obviously, they didn't do all of the things that they were supposed to do. So, I don't know how they could come around and want to charge us an additional 10%. I believe that's what Mr. Mobley indicated. And then, we're on a month-to-month, because we need them right now. And then, I think we're in litigation or discussions for at least a one-year program, a one-year contract. And so, wasn't, I mean, obviously, with a clause of that amount, we would have some type of clauses in there, and so, there was nothing? And lastly, with respect to that, the next time we have a contract relative to that, can we have quarterly updates in terms of how they're doing? So, in other words, I don't know if we have to contract out for Lurch and his company and spend money to have them, but maybe they could come before us and/or Marty Mays and give a quarterly presentation, once we get past this, as to how they're doing, you know, they're not, they're not cleaning out the sewers. If we had that, in my view, on a quarterly basis, then we would be, we would see stuff coming down the road. And so, you know, that's, that's something that we could take a look at, rather than getting it, no fault to the disadministration or the council. I mean, we deal with stuff as it happens, but moving forward, could we have that put? Because ultimately, we're going to have to deal with them and/or another vendor to that depth and scope of a contract. Would you agree to that?
Well, first of all, let me say that I will not discuss anything pertaining to pending contractual negotiations in open session. In terms of any reporting that is possible, all that would be the desire of the governing body. The administration could certainly look at the frequency of updates as far as our water system is concerned.
Lastly, Council President, this is my last question. As you know, I don't know if you know this, Mr. Map, but it may be one or two or 2.5 persons in this room that know that for a long time, we've had an after-school program. The thrust of it was from 6:00 to 9:00, and they had a lot of activities emanating out of the Orange Preparatory Academy, which was formerly known as the Orange Middle School. It started, I think, with the Hackett administration. I think it evolved, went under the auspices or the direction of, I'm going to go out of limb, I don't mean no disrespect, but Keith Pressey. And as you know, that program is no longer in effect. And so, what I want to say to that is now, we have a Deputy Director of Community Affairs, and then with this administration, they made a structure where that they would have, they would have a Deputy Director, who the Deputy Director was kind of like in charge of recreation, whereas the Director of Community Affairs was like in charge of senior citizen programs, even though some of them may have overlapped, et cetera, et cetera. Now, when Keith Pressey was here, you had Daryl Holcomb, he was the Deputy Director. Obviously, he didn't carry over until this administration, and that's the discretion of the mayor, so be it. And then, you had Keith Pressey was in charge of the recreation. And so, now you have Ms. Wooten, who's the Deputy Director of Recreation, but when I talked to her last year, and the reason I did, because of the Family Day and the Anti-Violence Program, a young lady by the name of Ms. Edwards, I forgot her first name, she called me to tell me some information about it. So, I said, "Well, who are you?" And she indicated to me that she was a confidential secretary. Okay?
You know, quite frankly, Council, I'm not going to discuss staff and employees in this council meeting.
But I'm going to go on record at this council meeting. And so, as I was saying, and so, now we have, from my understanding, and I, you know, I could be wrong, but if you don't want to respond, that's fine. Now, we have a Mr. Lewis, I don't even know what he does or what he gets paid, but I'm told he works in recreation. We have some additional confidential aides who I met. I don't recall their name, but they were polite enough to introduce themselves to me. And so, it just seems to me that we have all of these additional staff working specifically in recreation, in my humble view.
Chair.
Council, I'm sorry.
I don't think we should be discussing personnel.
Council, I mean, Director, I'm sorry, Director Matt, Councilwoman Abdul Rashid, pause, Attorney Smith?
Chairman, reference to employee's name.
Councilwoman Abdul Rashid, can you get to where you're going, just by saying there were five employees, now there's 20?
Okay, strike the, strike the name, but the Deputy Director of Community Affairs, striking the name. And so, so you can't comment on anything I just said?
I'm not going to discuss personnel in open session. I never do, and I never will.
Okay. Can you, independent of that, can you comment on anything I just said, relative to the Recreation Department?
You've been talking about personnel, and I wouldn't discuss it right now.
Do you know when the after-school program from 6:00 to 9:00 was terminated, and why?
No, I do not.
Do you know who do?
No, I do not.
Is there anybody in the administration that would know that?
I will look into that for you.
I conclude.
Thank you. Just some brief comments. Director Dow. Scoutmaster Darren Popick sent you some information about starting a U-13. Did you get that?
He just got it tonight.
He just got it tonight?
Yeah, I did. I met him, I think about two weeks ago. He was supposed to give me an email. He never contacted me, but tonight, Councilwoman Easton contacted me, and we're going to work something on that.
Okay, you'll be working on that, okay.
Council President.
Can you just get a copy of it? No, I haven't. I'm looking at it. I just wanted to make sure that if we, because actually, they have, I think, the Boy Scout troop there has several Eagle Scouts there, very advanced scout, Boy Scout troop. So, if we can utilize what they're designing to do, would be very helpful. If you can just report with some update on December 17th, that would be helpful. I have it in front of me, Councilwoman Easton. Councilwoman Abdul Rashid?
Yeah, is it appropriate to ask if, well, I'm not going to say to councilmembers, if I can get a copy of the layoff plan? Is that an appropriate question?
It's, that's what I said, that's a part of the, that's a part of Friday's response.
Again, I'm having a senior moment, I beg.
It's okay. Councilwoman Gompert Butler has let me know that she has to leave, so.
And I'm not going to be too far behind you. Yeah, so do I.
The Fire Department, as we always do, every year, does a toy drive, and Captain Anderson forgot to mention, please, did you want to just say, I see you getting up, I'm sorry. He just asked me to remind people that they're accepting donations for toys.
Captain James Anderson is our Community Relations Officer, and as I stated before, we appreciate all the support we got for Thanksgiving, but we have Christmas coming up, and we do have a toy drive. Any help we can get, we appreciate it.
Okay, might I suggest, just to make, if you can maybe coordinate and leave in different areas at the police, FOC, at City Hall, so people can drop them off, so they just won't have to come to Central Avenue.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman.
I just want to, Mrs. Ingrid Williams and Councilwoman Gompert Butler just spoke about the Orange community in different facets, and I think that as we move forward, that if we rely on things that we know that we can control in terms of supporting one another in any way, in the little things that we can do, it makes a difference. Because if you were at the Fire Department, and I'm very thankful for the Fire Department to continuing that tradition that was started several years ago under firefighter Derek, I can't think, when he started the program of feeding the people in Orange. If you've ever sat there, and usually, I'm coming from Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade, so I'm a little tired, so I sit there through the parade, but if you kind of sit there, I don't know what time the fire, well, finished, because as everybody is walking out the door, there's still people walking in needing to be fed. So, even after we put all the dishes up, and we think we've served the last plate, somebody else is walking in the door. I think this year, I left at 5:00, and somebody else was still walking in the door. So, it tells me that it's a very needed event that we do every year, and it's something that we've just scratched the surface in terms of our community needs. So, we need to be very mindful of that. I just wanted to, I got a text earlier about the Hillside race, and I want to compliment and congratulate Councilwoman Angela Garren, in the spirit of sisterhood, who prevailed, and she is the, she is now the mayor-elect of Hillside. So, kudos to sisterhood, Councilwoman Angela Garrett in Hillside. And I believe that's it.
Here, we're up to item number nine.
I'm sorry. Wait, Councilwoman Maribel, Ms. Woodford?
The race is in a runoff.
I'm sorry?
He's in a runoff.
The runoff was tonight, council, tonight, and she won tonight, Councilwoman Maribel, while we were here, with 55% of the vote. Now, we're going into, just for clarification, as we get to the agenda, we're removing 51 and 52, and we're going to remove for, we're removing 51 and 52. We're removing 408, and we're going to amend 406.
What are we doing?
Okay.
What are we doing?
We're removing ordinance 51 and 52, okay? We're removing Resolution 408, and we're amending Resolution 406, okay? If you had an audience, please. I'm sorry. Yes, Council?
So, are we parking those, are we going to park now?
No, no, we're not there, no, we're not there. I'm just letting us, so we can move the agenda more swiftly.
Because we really need to amend 409. The last line says, "Up until June 30th, 2014," but the whole calendar year goes up to December 31st, 2014, and if the last budget process is any barometer, which it was, didn't conclude till August or September, then that means these folks, their term would terminate theoretically before the budget process is over with, if we were even to go by the recent budget process.
Okay.
So, that should be changed, in my view, 12/31/2014. Thank you.
Attorney Smith, can you note that?
Sure.
Can you just look at 409? It's just, we should make an amendment that to the end of the year, 12/31/2014, okay? 409, you have it?
Motion to amend.
Well, we're going to do it now, so it's not going to do it here.
Motion to adopt as amended.
Okay. Ready?
I'm ready. Okay, we're up to item number nine, ordinances for second reading and public hearing. This would be an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Orange Township, Chapter 200, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section 200-51-1, Handicap Parking Spaces, 500 South Center Street, Apartment 9.
Motion to, I'm sorry, a motion?
Move.
Motion by Councilwoman Abdul Rashid, second by Councilwoman Jonesville.
Motion to do what?
So, what's up?
We don't.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Is there anybody we need to do, this is second read, by title? Is there anybody from the public that would like to be heard? Can you rescind your motion, I'm sorry?
Rescind.
And Councilwoman Jonesville, we're on 46-20-13. Councilmembers, are we ready? 46-20-13. This is a motion for second read, and it's an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Orange Township, Chapter 200, titled Vehicle and Traffic, Section 200-52-1, Handicap Parking Space at 500 South Center Street, Apartment 9. Is there anybody from the public that needs to be heard on this?
Councilwoman Williams, just so you know, I have that item, but it's not on my agenda.
Mine either.
Did she get, just, um?
She gave you an update.
Agenda last night.
You got a new agenda last night.
Motion to close public hearing.
Just a second, Councilwoman Abdul Rashid. I mean, Councilwoman Corvett.
I thought what I got last night was a new item.
Uh-uh, there was a, we all got new agendas.
All right.
So, what agenda do you have? Do you have the back sheet? Just, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Corvett, I just want to make sure everybody can follow through. You got it?
I have that now.
Is there anybody from the public who needs to, or motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Corvett, second by Councilwoman Jonesville. On the motion? I'm sorry, roll, all in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Is there a motion to?
Move.
Second.
Motion for final adoption by Councilwoman Corvett, motion, second by Councilwoman Jonesville, on the motion. Seeing none, roll call.
Councilmember Abdul Rashid?
In favor.
Councilmember Corvett?
Yes.
Easton?
Yes.
Gompert Butler?
Absent, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Jonesville?
Yes.
Councilwoman Maribel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams is a yes.
Six ayes, one absent.
Is there, we're due an ordinances table from August 7th, 22-2013, an ordinance set in force for an employee tuition reimbursement policy and guidelines are, the City of Orange Township amending and supplementing Chapter 23 of the Municipal Code in the Appendix titled City of Orange Township Employee Handbook of the Personnel Policies and Procedures. Is there a motion to lift the table? Seeing none, moving to second motion table, 32-2013, a bond ordinance providing for various capital acquisitions improvements by and in the City of Orange Township. capital acquisitions improvements by and in the City of Orange Township and the county invested state of New Jersey, appropriate 9,826, therefore authorizing the issuance of 8,935,500 bonds and notes of the city to finance the cost thereof. Is there a motion to lift from the table? Seeing none, moving the agenda to the third table ordinance, 37-2013, an ordinance setting aside employment guidelines for the City of Orange Township, and amending and supplementing Chapter 23 of the Municipal Code and the appendix titled City of Orange Township Employee Handbook of Personnel Policies and Procedures. Is there a motion to remove from the table? Seeing none, moving forward to the consent agenda.
All items listed within the address are considered to be routine of the city council and be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests. In which event, the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda.
Council president.
Councilman Abdul Rashid?
406, dealing with the bill list, and so, did we amend 409, the date was that?
We can remove it to, well, Attorney Smith?
You want to amend that to December 30th, 2014?
To 2030, December 31st.
That's not a defective change, Mr. Smith?
Well, if there's a change, obviously.
Well, I said a defective change.
If you wish to resubmit it, that can be done.
Well, I'm asking your legal opinion.
We believe, I believe it can be amended here.
I conclude.
So, do we need, my question to you, Attorney Smith, do we need to take it off and do it as a separate vote, so we move 409, 2013?
I conclude.
Thank you, Councilwoman Abdul Rashid. Councilmembers, any other?
Councilwoman Williams, you indicated you were also amending 408?
We're removing.
Oh, removing it?
Yes.
Not for a separate vote, but from the agenda?
From the agenda.
Okay.
Are there any other? 406 and 409 have been removed. Okay, consent agenda?
Resolution is 399, 2013, 400, 2013, 401, 2013, 402, 2013, 403, 2013, 404, 2013, 405, 2013, 407, 2013.
We have a motion. Motion by Councilwoman Easton?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Jonesville, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion, I've got to speak up, I'm voting, the motion carries, is none opposed. Going back to separate vote, 406, 2013. And just for clarification, we have amended amounts, and we have removed, and there were other duplications, so I am going through this list real quick again. Page one, $3,258. Page two, $1,541.95. Page two, $15,983. 499.28, 65.04. Page 13, 964.50, 1,062.55. Page 14, $11,407.08, $409.33. Page 16, $152,873.70. Continuing on to the end of the document, the pages begin to renumber as one, two, and then one again, that says check payment, badge verification listed. If we go beyond that page, that payment of $65 needs to be removed.
Well, that's a check that has been issued.
Let me just finish, Councilwoman Easton. And then, going to the second page, there are two checks with $65 total and $130. So, that would need to be removed. While we're getting the figure, Mr. Matt, have those checks been issued?
Yes, those three are duplicates of three on a freehold page.
So, did you, did you show, did you say that it's a duplicate?
Uh-huh, oh, okay.
Okay.
But the check has been issued for $65, right?
Mr. Matt?
Yes.
But it is, if you look at the page before that, it's a duplicate. So, the total amount, Ms. Smith?
We believe the total amount at this point is $3,251,359.25, but we'll have to run a tape. And 25 cents. We're going to have to run a tape on it. We've come up, we've added it six times, and come up with six different figures, so we need a tape on it. We'll get back to you.
So, as amended?
As amended.
Okay. A resolution approving the bill list for council meeting vote on tonight, December 3rd, dated November 26th, approving checks issued by the Finance Department. In accordance with ordinance 2-95, as amended, the amount of $302,51,359.25 to be approved tomorrow via tape.
Move.
Okay. Move by Councilwoman Corvus, second by Councilwoman Jonesville.
Thank you.
On the motion? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilmember Abdul Rashid?
Not in favor.
Councilmember Corvus?
Yes.
Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gaunt Butler?
Bob Butler, I'm sorry.
She's not here, absent. Councilmember Jonesville?
Yes.
Councilmember Maribel?
No.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes, four yeas, two nays, one absent.
You don't have the other one, do you?
Yes, we do, 409.
Exactly.
Thank you for reminding, Councilwoman.
You're welcome.
Moving to 409, 2013.
409, 2013, a resolution appointing Ingrid Williams, Christopher Jackson, Nahim Campbell, and Bruce Meyer as members to the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee for the upcoming calendar year.
Move.
Second.
Move by Councilwoman Corvus, second by Councilwoman Jonesville, on the motion. There is an amendment needed, as noticed by Councilwoman Abdul Rashid, that the last line should read for the upcoming year until July, until December 31st, 2014.
That's correct.
Okay. To vote, as amended, roll call.
Councilmember Abdul Rashid?
In favor.
Councilmember Corvus?
Yes.
Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gaunt Butler is absent. Councilmember Jonesville?
Yes.
Councilmember Maribel?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
It passes six, yeas, one absent.
Before we, Councilwoman Easton, we have two announcements to make, so if you could, before Councilwoman Easton, before we adjourn, and Councilwoman Easton makes the final comment announcement for tonight, I forgot in my announcements to congratulate Captain Sewey, who was given a civic award for his service. So, if you get a chance, please give him a call, and thank him, and congratulate him. Captain, Councilwoman Easton.
Captain.
Sewey, Kevin Sewey.
Oh, and Councilwoman, the announcement is, as you know, every, well, this is going to be the first time, and I'm going to give you a flyer. On December 18th, the council is going to have a forum at Oprah to tell our story, to discuss the 2013 budget. So, I want to give each one a flyer. We will do more, and I would like each council member to participate. You can do a five-minute message that you want to give to the audience, so that they get to know us for who we are.